Okay, we will go ahead and call this special board meeting to order. Can we take roll call please?
Ms. Atkins, Mrs. McDaniel.
Here.
Mrs. Peterson, Mrs. Shuffle.
Here.
Mr. Sorensen, Mr. Storm.
Here.
Mr. Wright.
Here. Approval of the July 21st, 2025 special agenda. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Vote, please.
Mrs. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mrs. Shuffle?
Yes.
Mr. Storm?
Here.
Mr. Wright?
Yes. Discussion items 3.01, activity conference realignment.
Okay, so I do have, Mr. Dermity is going to come up here and talk real quick. I'm just, of course, this thing is not working for me to display, so I'm going to see if we can get an HD mic cord. And then I can display some of the stuff that Mr. Dermity is going to talk about.
Do I really need to turn this on?
Yes.
I do?
Yeah, because that's how they hear you.
Okay, it's on?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Do you want earlobe up here? What's that? Do you want this one?
I'm trying to see if I can get the EV pop up here. There it is. Maybe. Okay, so I do have just some information here. Mr. Dermity has asked me to display. So how this will work is Mr. Dermity will give us kind of a rundown of why we're even having this conversation and then just a brief overview and then we'll allow for public comment. And then after the public comments are done, then during the board meeting, you guys will then ask, there's another discussion item in there, you guys will ask any clarifying questions of Mr. Dermity that you would like to, you know. So even though this is technically all a discussion, this, this particular session is mostly so we can hear from the community and those who want to come talk, so.
Okay, ready? All right. Thanks for having me. I guess first off, I'll just kind of give you a little summary of how we got to where we are right now. I'm not sure everybody actually knows. So I think it was in, in May, toward the end of the school year, Shenandoah and Red Oak were invited to the Western Iowa Conference. And both schools communicated to our A D group that they were, they were strongly considering a move to the Western Iowa Conference. And actually about an hour ago, Shenandoah did vote 5-0 to move to the Western Iowa Conference. So Shenandoah is leaving for sure to, and going to the Western Iowa Conference. So the, the remaining schools, or some of the remaining schools felt like it was important for the Hawkeye 10 to not just sit idle, but kind of look at our conference makeup and, and react in some way. They, they didn't feel as though staying with nine schools with, with the shakeup and, and the size of schools changing so much that that was an option, which was a little bit disappointing to me because I, I didn't think that was a bad option actually, but that really wasn't, wasn't really on the, on the table, so to speak. And, and I probably should preface that is, you know, I see a lot of social media stuff where Lewis Central should do this and Lewis Central should do that, and we need to go to this conference and this and that. And, and ultimately, I think what everybody needs to understand is we only get the control of Lewis Central. You know, conferences, I'd had a couple of people mention, why don't we look at conferences toward Des Moines and that? We don't get to just decide where we go. You know, a, a conference has to invite us, a conference has to, to vote us in. There's a process that goes through just like the Hawkeye 10. So ultimately, as the conversation started to happen with the Hawkeye 10, I think the goal with the group collectively was to, to take any measures they could to keep Shenandoah and Red Oak in the Hawkeye 10. That collectively, that was the group's decision. So conversations went in a lot of different directions, but ultimately to, to try to appease everybody, but I think mostly those two schools. The discussion, or the decision was made to try to, to invite schools in that would be able to form a big school, small school, two divisions, big school, small school divisions. Then their conversations was, are the divisions going to be by size? Are they going to be by competitiveness? And so I don't know as though that was ever actually decided. But through conversations, formal invitation was sent to Trainer and Carol. There were other schools that were, that were, that were brought up that others thought would be a good fit. But I think ultimately, they thought Trainer and Carol had the, the biggest level of interest at this time. So formal invites were sent to those two schools and, and we, these meetings were with superintendents, principals, and A Ds all together. And, and Dr. Hazing and Mr. McChattell and I discussed it. And we, we actually did not vote. We voted against sending an invite to, for, for Trainer to enter the Hawkeye 10 just because of their size. We don't feel that that's a great fit for us in a conference. We did vote for Carol as an addition, just so you know. But those invites went out and Dr. Hazing, if you remember, is it?
Like a week ago officially.
Yeah, did we give them a deadline?
We did not give them a deadline.
Okay. So that's kind of where we're at. And over probably the last four or five years, I've had a lot of informal conversations with A Ds, particularly Council Board A Ds, but even Sioux City A Ds, Sioux City schools, because we play them in, in a lot of things. And the, the conversation is counseling them, asking me, when are you guys going to join our conference? When are you guys going to join our conference? So you know, with this shakeup and our conversations with smaller schools being invited to the Hawkeye 10, we started to maybe question our fit a little bit was, if, if it was only going to be smaller schools. So had a conversation with the Missouri River Conference, a couple of A Ds. They met or had a conversation and they decided to invite Lewis Central, Glenwood, Harlan, and Dentson slash Wink. And I think the goal for that was to have six schools as a south division and six schools as a north division. Which, you know, sounded like a great option, you know, but again, we don't get to control that. You know, every, every school gets to decide. And at this point, I think of the four, we are the only ones that are considering the M R C option. I think the other three Hawkeye 10 schools that were invited are not interested at this time. So from there, we just, obviously with, with the invite from the Missouri River Conference, the landscape changing of the Hawkeye 10, we felt like we had two options that we really needed to consider. And so our next step was Dr. Hazing and I put together a lot of information, just some comparison data with the twos, with the two conferences and how we kind of, how we kind of compare with, with a number of different factors. And we put that together. We've shared that with our public as much as we could. Sent to coaches, sent it out through, bound to all of our parents, our athletes. I think it was shared on social media. So hoping to get as much information out there as possible to our public. And so just quickly, I'll go through this. I think you, most of you have seen this and there's a, there's a lot there. So I'm not going to go through every little bit. I'll certainly answer any questions that, that any of you may have. But that first, that first page is just, some of the, some of the things that we think are important to consider, obviously the size of every school. And you can see up there that the yellow are all the schools in the M R C, the blue are all the schools in the Hawkeye 10. So you can see kind of where we compare from a beds count, that beds count or enrollment count. That's, that's in order of biggest to smallest up there is what you see.
Freshmen through junior classes.
Yeah, beds is, yeah, freshman through junior classes. Travel time obviously was important. You know, type of travel, you know, somebody, somebody asked me like, what, what does it matter whether it's interstate or county? I said, well, you know, some, some parents don't like their kids being on the interstate, you know, some, some like, don't like their kids being on county roads. We thought it was important. We talked to our, to Chuck Skoken, and he, he said our bus drivers would prefer interstate travel. So just thought that that was a consideration that we need to put in there. And then enrollment trends, which I think is, is really important. Where the, the schools in Hawkeye 10 particularly are going from a, from an enrollment standpoint, but, but even the, the M R C. I don't know as though whatever, whatever we decide as, as a board in the next two weeks, I don't, if, I think things are going to continue to change. Enrollment is changing so much with, with the schools that we're talking about that, that I don't think the conversation's over. So I thought it was important to have enrollment trends in there. Travel time obviously is, is important. And then going from there, we went, I, we kind of dove into classification summary, meaning what class the Hawkeye 10 schools play in versus the class that M R C schools play in and then us. So you can see the four categories is there are some schools in the Hawkeye 10 that are two or more classes below us. Some a class below, some the same size. And then larger class, there are some M R C schools that play in a larger class than us. Classification is, is a really difficult thing to look at honestly, because the way the state does it, we have, we have, you know, with football, you have five classes, plus you have eight man football. So football is entirely different. It's not a conference sport anyway, but, but classification is different in football. You get a sport like wrestling. Wrestling has three classes. Our, our boys in basketball, baseball, track, were four A out of four classes. Girls is different because girls is a different athletic union and they have five classes. So our girls are, are pretty much four A across the board. And everything except for cross country, we are four A out of four classes. So cross country, or looking at classification is, is, is tough from, from our perspective at, at Lewis Central because we, we are, from a boys' perspective, most of your classification, classification is your top 48 schools is your biggest class in, in, in most sports. And we lie kind of at the bottom of that 40. I think we were 46th in enrollment this year. So, but girls are in a five A class, so they're more toward the upper, probably third of, of four A. So when you talk about going to postseason and, and getting to state tournaments, softball was obviously a little bit different than baseball. Use those examples because they're close. Baseball is, is competing with Valley, Dowling, Waukees schools, whereas as softball, schools, some Hawkeye 10 sized schools, but more, you know, Dallas, Intergreens, Creston, Winterset schools that size. So looking at classification is difficult just because of the state of Iowa is with two different associations and the way they do things, it's hard. But you can see through this chart that, that we, you know, we probably fit better in the M R C if you're just looking at classification. We match M R C schools much closer than we do Hawkeye 10 when it comes to classification. So if you're looking at classification, obviously, you know, that's a better fit probably. Scheduling, again, scheduling was, was kind of the next thing we looked at. And scheduling again is very, is very different for every sport. So I have three coaches behind me. Coach May coaches cross country and what conference you're in really doesn't matter, honestly, because you're, you go to one conference meet a year and the rest of your schedule, you decide where you go. No different now with the Hawkeye 10. We have the Hawkeye 10 cross country meet toward the end of the year. The rest of the meets we go to, we decide where we want to go. So the M R C would be no different. Really, really not a huge effect on cross country. Coach Mann's in wrestling, probably one of the sports similar to volleyball that's kind of in the middle in terms of your, your conference and how, how much that affects you. Wrestling, we go to, you know, we wrestle pretty much every Saturday and, and we decide where we go. During the week, we wrestle duels against our, our conference opponents. So it's just kind of how that schedule would look. You know, we wrestle four, I think four, four or five throughout the year. Now we do either triangulars or, or quads where there's three or four schools there. So Coach Mann's and I have had conversations about, you know, what, what that would look like for wrestling now with, with, with boys. He was in, coached at T J previously, so he's been in that conference. He kind of knows the landscape a little bit. So wrestling is kind of one of those sports that's in the middle. Coach Riggs is here with softball and softball and baseball, probably basketball are the, are the sports where you do play a lot of conference games. So they would be affected the most. So again, going back to scheduling, it's hard to just say that scheduling is better in one conference or the other because every sport is a little bit different, if that makes sense. So again, I can answer any questions you have there, but, but I made some notes there. As far as, you know, having lower levels. I, Toby really dug into the M R C scheduling and, and what their numbers look like. I, I, I can't tell you that there's a huge difference there, to be honest with you. And then just in summary, we just kind of summarized at the end, travel time between the two, a little bit about kind of what I just said with the sports, the, the activities that have probably the biggest effect. I, I kind of laid that out there in there. Middle school implications, honestly, I think it was probably, I would, I probably, I was probably at Lewis Central three or four years as a middle school principal. We went through this change. The Hawkeye 10 schools, the majority of the Hawkeye 10 schools couldn't offer us, you know, the three levels of, of teams like we have. I mean, sometimes our middle school, we could, we could have five levels in some grades. We had such good participation in the Hawkeye 10 schools, other than maybe Harlan, Glenwood, and Denison, that we were lucky to get two. So we kind of went away from scheduling with the Hawkeye 10 in middle school athletics and went to a kind of, are a, kind of a member of a conference, middle school conference in Omaha, and it's served us pretty well. We don't travel very far, and so that wouldn't change. Middle school, we would stay the same. I know the Kern and Wilson right now currently don't go to Sioux City for middle school athletics. They don't compete in the M R C as middle school. So really has very little implication on middle school. So I know there's a lot here and, and I went kind of fast. After we talk, like the Hawkeye 10 right now does an art show. That's a pretty big deal. Our kids really enjoy that. Unfortunately, the M R C does not have that. There's some conversation, I think at one point in time they did, they would be interested in having, you know, having conversations about starting that back up. Fine arts, we really don't do anything from a fine arts perspective conference wise anymore because of the size of schools and the numbers that each school has in their fine arts programs. M R C doesn't do a lot either. Academic awards, the Hawkeye 10 annually runs the academic awards banquet. The, the M R C does not. I know the A L and T J, both conversations with them, they, even before this conference conversation, they, they were, have approached us about doing a city one. Where we do a city similar type of thing where Denopera would maybe, maybe cover that for us. So there are possibilities there, but I, as of, as of now, that's just a maybe.
And we did have, these are the graphics that we shared out, just same information, just in a quick scan thing. We did look into, I know we had a question about, we completely about, what, did you look into any other conference, conferences? Well, the other two kind of viable conferences would be like the Raccoon River, which would be a lot of the schools we play, both these schools we play in districts. And then throughout the year, if we can get them on the schedule. Problem is, is when you look at those, just from our perspective, you know, you look at the Raccoon River, there's only two, a couple of schools in there that are below two hours. And then every other school is then the mid two hours, so it's a little bit further. Mr. Dermity did have a conversation with an A D or two over there, and they are not interested in, neither one of these conferences are interested in extending an invite to Lewis Central because we're so far away from them. Like they're all pretty centered to each other. And then I don't think hardly any of them make a trip close to two hours. And now they would all make a trip two hours to see us. So not really interested in that. Little Hawkeye, the same thing. You look at, that's the Indianola, Norwalk, Pella. You know, some of those, some of those drives are, you know, three hours or close to three hours. So, so it's a long drive on a Tuesday night, three hour drive. So again, no interest in, in inviting us because we're two to three hours away from them. So not really, we're kind of landlocked as far as what our options are. So that's why looking at the only two viable options that we have. And then we did do a conference survey and to get the survey, you, there had to be a part of our school infrastructure. So you had to, you had to have, you know, to be registered through Power School because we wanted to make sure we didn't get people from all over the world taking this thing. So you had to be a part of Power School or you had to, like we did put an option out there online for if you wanted to and you're not a Power School and you didn't get the email, you could submit basically your credentials to us and then request a survey and then we would send it back to you. This kept, you know, people from, you know, let's say Oregon saying that, you know, or these bots that are, you know, very interested apparently in what we have going on here in Western Iowa. So so here's kind of the, the results of the survey as we have them right now.
And surprising on that first one, I, I actually sent some follow-up emails to, to our coaches once and just said, we, we don't have a lot of coaches that have taken that. I urge you to, you know, give us your feedback. I think and our coaches could, can maybe speak better than, than me or than me speaking for them, but because every sport is affected a little bit differently by conference, I, I think most of them, most like Coach May, and again, I'm not speaking for him, but in our conversations, he said, doesn't matter to me. Like I don't, I don't, I would, I would rather just let the people that it really affects greatly vote and, and decide. So I did, and so we did get some more coaches to fill out the survey because I said, you know, we, we want your feedback. And then we weren't getting a lot of student feedback, student athlete feedback. So I emailed the coaches again and said, hey, send us out to your kids and urge your kids to fill it out. So we did get some more kids, but surprisingly, we didn't get a lot of kids that were, that were interested in, in filling it out.
Yeah, and you'll see here, kind of the, the main ones that they focused on were a level of competition and then travel distance time, you know, that they thought is most important. Surprising to me, rivalries wasn't, I mean, that was, I saw it's some of the most least important. That kind of surprised me. I thought rivalries would be a big one. And then as you scroll down here, you'll see this is kind of all the, this is all the feedback right now. So as it stands, and actually we got four more responses since I ran this data. So the top one's actually 47.9% now, but you'll see 47, roughly 48% now of all people that filled it out say they prefer to go to Missouri River Conference. to Missouri River Conference. Thirty-one percent would prefer to stay in the Hawkeye ten, and then roughly twenty-two percent don't really have a standing opinion. And then, oops. Hold on. Here we go here. And then broken down by group, so this is kind of by group. Make this a little bigger again, sorry. You'll see approximately, you know, we had twenty-five coach responses, sixty percent MRC, sixteen percent Hawkeye ten, twenty-four percent don't have a strong opinion either way. Parents community, fifty-eight percent, which is actually, they were the most respondees were our parents' community members. Fifty-eight percent MRC, twenty-two percent Hawkeye ten, twenty percent not, no strong opinion. And then fifty-seven responses from the students, the vast majority of them Hawkeye ten, and then MRC was last there. So, oops. Ah, I keep messing this up, sorry. Scroll. So that's kind of the, that's kind of, so two out of three groups kind of gave their responses. So again, we had this up for two weeks roughly. So I guess this time, I'm just going to ask you guys just kind of let that marinate a little bit, and then I'll just, I'll let people come up and kind of talk about their initial responses, and just when you come up, tell.
They already filled out sheets.
What's that?
I already have the sheets.
Oh, look at that. Ooh, we're ahead of the game here. So, okay, so whoever wants to come first?
Rob Riggs.
All right. I'm just speaking tonight, just to represent softball, because, you know, I coach softball. But also, I got two daughters that'll eventually, you know, play softball, and they also got a son that's going to play, you know, he's starting his freshman year this year. But I, yes, it highly affects softball. I just want to make sure, you know, like Mr. Dermody said, LC can learn about LC, but when I'm specifically looking at softball, I guess baseball as well, right now, we play twenty conference games. If we were to go to the MRC, that number, as it stands, how their conference runs, we'd play thirty-two games. We are allotted forty total games for our entire varsity season. So that only leaves us eight other game slots. If we choose to have a full schedule, which depends on numbers and available, like what we can do, along with also building a schedule where if postseason play, if we have rainouts, have to make things up. So those are all logistic things that are out of our control. I just want to make sure that's just aware. That also being said, the way the MRC stands now, and I know they've talked about changing things, is they play double headers home and away each. So that means we'd be going to Sioux City six times for our conference schedule. So even though the travel looks different, we're traveling more, and I'm not sure how the lower levels work. I think JV runs the opposite days, but that means our JV level would also then be traveling six times as it stands currently, which now in the Hawkeye ten, like this year, we didn't go to Clorinda because they came to us for a double header. Last year, Creston came to us and vice versa. So there's some things, if you really want to look at travel, and that's a big concern for people, is baseball, softball specifically, there'll probably be more travel, especially in the summer. I think currently, and I could be wrong, talking to Chuck this summer, I think we have two buses with AC. One wasn't fully AC working, made a little hot. So I think as a district, if we make this transition, we're going to have to look at what we need to do to support our athletes better in those terms of making sure we have the right accommodations and everything else. Black said, I trust whatever's decided. I just hope that the MRC is willing to look at changes in how they do specifically softball, along with baseball as well, just to make it a better experience for kids or otherwise, you know. Out of our forty games, we're playing thirty-two. We don't have many chances, maybe because like, it's kind of like wrestling on the weekends, we go to tournaments, we have a chance to play other teams. In the Missouri River, there's only a couple of teams in our classification that we play postseason as it is right now. For us to go to state, out of the three games we'd had to win, we had to play two conference teams, one being Creston. I'll also say to this, I believe MRC had one ranked school in the state in softball, and Hawkeye ten had three. So level of competition as well, it's just, again, completely depends on the sport, but I just hope whatever is decided that we do what's right for kids and supporting them in whatever conference we're in, and then also the conference also accommodates and makes it, you know, best for all. So if it is the MRC that we're not just locked into our schedule and everything else, so it still allows for some adjustability and some flexibility for the kids and families. But that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
August Manns.
Appreciate the chance to speak. I know Coach Dermody said it a little earlier, but I have coached in both conferences that we're looking at. So I have firsthand knowledge of what it's like to be both conferences. So I'm kind of going to speak from that standpoint a little bit and go from there. Like Coach Riggs said, for the sports of basketball, both boys and girls, softball and baseball, every one of those sports will have to travel to the north six times, no matter what. And unlike what we're doing right now, yeah, you'll go to Creston every other year, you'll go to Carroll every other year. So it's, the travel is kind of, it's not, doesn't look as accurate as what it was put up there by mileage. When I was coaching the MRC, not one basketball or baseball or softball coach was happy about that travel. They did not like having to go up there every, every year. And as you know, the Missouri River floods, so in the summer, there's been times where the interstate's shut down, and you're taking a two-lane highway all the way up to Lamar's or Sioux City. Obviously, that's not something that happens all the time, but it is something that does happen, and it does take more time away from athletes and coaches by being on the road The conference itself, the MRIC, I can tell you from just personal, it was one of the worst ran conferences compared to the Hawkeye ten, which I think is one of the best ran conferences. And the biggest part of that, my reason behind that is the Hawkeye ten cares about the kids. They want what's best for the kids. My experience in the MRC was what's the least amount of work we can do to make this tournament or this match happen and get out of here? It was never about what's best for the athletes. The other thing was AL and TJ were always outvoted by the Sioux City schools. So when you go to the MRC, it's not what's best for the conference, it's always going to be what, it's what's best for Sioux City. And they'll always look out for themselves, and they'll vote that way in every, every The other thing that we noticed when we were at TJ was travel costs went up, and so they had travel budgets that would then reflect into who you competed against in non-conference play, because you didn't have as much money to use towards travel for those experiences. And then gate. Gate fees went down after we joined the MRIC. The Sioux Cities are not very good about traveling and supporting their teams. Obviously, if it's two really good teams, you probably see a little bit better gate, but them knowing, say, in a really highly touted basketball game, if they know they get to see it in their backyard, they're probably just going to go watch that one game and not travel down to watch the other game. So you're probably only going to get some parents. My, my true gut feeling is if we're looking out for what's best for Lewis Central, and I know, like Mr. Dermody said, we need to, we can only, we can only take care of Lewis Central, but I think both conferences need to look at working together and becoming a superconference. The eastern side of the state does not care about anyone on the western side, and for us to get noticed and to help elevate our, our activities to the level they need to be at, I think a superconference would be something to look at. And I know it's not going to be a quick fix, and I know it's not going to be easy, but if you formulated a bigger conference, you can change the dynamics of it, and you don't have to always play everybody. It could always, it could be based off geography, it could be based on that sport and what the best teams in that sport is. Could be one division, a middle division, and even a bottom division, so everybody's competing against schools more, more at their level. There's just a lot of different opportunities there. But I think, like Mr. Dermody said, there is a invite to Harlan, Dennison, Glenwood, along with us, but only, we're the only ones looking at it. That's why I think it needs to be something where we get both sides in, on the same page and, and work towards that goal. But I also know that we can only do so much. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
I did get an email from Kelly Bergman.
Yeah, she asked me to read that.
Okay.
Yep, so I got an email from Kelly Bergman, so she asked me to read it. "This is Kelly Bergman, nineteen ninety-five LC grad, parent of two LC alumni and two high school students. LC Booster Club board member for four years plus two years as president. Southwest Iowa sports junkie, smiley face." So she says, "Lewis Central is a premier community school district in southwest Iowa. We are not part of Council Plus Public Schools. We are proud of the identity of being hardworking, having a community feel, and striving for excellence. We are a great fit in the Hawkeye ten conference. The majority of sports at LC are competitive in the conference. Few dominate annually to a point of low competition. LC, along with the Hawkeye ten conference, have a history of excellence and support of one another. There is pride with being part of the Hawkeye ten and tradition going back fifty-five years to the Hawkeye eight. Driving to events at Hawkeye ten schools are scenic through the beautiful countryside of southwest Iowa. Presenting only two options to parents in the survey did not give the whole picture. The MRC is a fine conference, but is not a good fit for Lewis Central. We would primarily play, we would play primarily CB schools and Sioux City schools. We already play the MRC schools and the sports they are competitive in. The MRC is not competitive in many areas. Some schools are good at some sports. It would be hard-pressed to the state, the level of competition across the board is much different than the Hawkeye ten. The state of Iowa has historically disrespected southwest Iowa and western Iowa in general in state rankings and seedings. Playing more western Iowa schools won't improve that disrespect. If LC truly wants to move on from the H-ten, which I don't think is a good idea, higher considerations should be given to a Des Moines area conference. With slightly longer travel times, we can compete with non-urban schools a similar size. I would rather drive east on interstate than north. I encourage the district to provide data and information to the parents, athletes, and community for the Central Iowa conferences in addition to MRC and consider responses. I grew up going to LC games as far back as I can remember. I faithfully read the Nonparel as a kid, reading about Jan Jensen at Elkhorn Kimbleton and Karen Jennings at Tri-Center. Now I spend way too much time reading KMA covers of southwest Iowa. I played four sports through the H-ten in middle school and high school, watched three siblings compete, and have four kids playing many sports leaving us very familiar with the H-ten facilities. What is wrong with them? I think humble, hard-working communities supporting their athletes the best they can, as the H-ten schools do, provide much better learning environments for our student athletes, and should be a higher priority than playing everything in top-of-the-line facilities. It just isn't necessary. Along that line, a quick plug for leaving the LC softball and baseball fields on the main campus and abandoning the Iowa Western game sites. If the driver is postseason rankings, a couple of things. Our programs have experienced massive success in the past ten to fifteen years. We don't need any more competitive advantage. Hard work, teamwork, discipline, integrity, those are benefits most students don't, or get participating in team sports. Our coaches, sponsors, parents, and administration prioritize these things already. Making a conference change for competitive advantage is unnecessary. If there is, if there is a desire to play more teams our own size, let's look at the Central Iowa conferences. There are more options to consider. I urge the board to vote to stay in the Hawkeye ten. If the H-ten conference votes us out, let's evaluate several conference options and present multiple options to the public for consideration, not just the MRC." So she sent me that, and then I won't read all these, but we, I did send you guys a copy of all of the, give me one second here. Yep, the survey responses, so I'll just, I will resume and switch over to this. Sorry, I'm playing both the... So in the survey responses, there's obviously, there's, there's a lot of comments as well, and, you know, we can see as you follow through the comments, you know, there's a lot of comments, you know, both good options, you know, some obviously for a move, some against a move. So there's just, you know, I would just ask the board to read through all the comments So some people say Missouri Valley will help us on the wrong run when it comes to competition and security. Hawkeye ten has shorter travel times, higher level of competition. So there's, there's just a lot of comments there. So as you, as you guys go through with the comments, again, there's no decision being made tonight, that'll be made on August fourth, if the board feels like they're prepared. Tonight's just simply an information gathering session, so. All right. Any other public comment?
No comments online.
All right. Then we will move to, well, was there any other discussion at this time? Primarily just the listening session, so. We'll move to comments and suggestions, and this is an opportunity in this special meeting where we open the floor to the public for any additional comments directed toward the I think we've already had from the coaches here. Do we have anybody additional online? Okay. Then we will move from there to adjourn the special meeting? Or can I get a vote to?
Make a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
Certainly.
Vote please. If we're all in favor, say aye. Just do it that way. Aye. And then we'll move into the regular board meeting. We'll call that one to order, so we can take roll call. Or do we need to take roll call again? Okay.
Ms. Atkins? Mrs. McDaniel?
Here.
Mrs. Peterson? Mr. Shuffle?
Here.
Mr. Sorenson? Mr. Sturm?
Here.
Mr. Wright?
Here. Approval of the July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five regular agenda? Can I get a motion to approve, please?
To approve.
Second.
Vote please.
Mrs. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mrs. Shuffle?
Yes.
Mr. Sturm?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes. Public hearing. We're going to open for Iowa Code twenty-six point one-two for public improvement project for the high school safety vestibule addition and renovation. Yep, so we have, oop, there we go. So the estimate that we are given from Landfer Nielsen was about one point five million for the building and another, they're estimating all-in price with, when you talk the pavement as well, it's going to be about one point seven million. That's the, when we talk about pavement, we're going to redo the pavement out in front of the middle, or out in front of the high schools, that way it more directs you towards the new entrance. That two hundred, extra two hundred thousand was originally factored into the parking lot renovation, then when it was decided we're going to do a vestibule entrance, then obviously just got moved over to this project. So it's not like an additional two hundred thousand, it was something that was factored into the original parking lot. So here is the, and you guys have already looked at this, but here is the schedule of drawings. It's essentially what it's going to look like, and it will add a new entrance and a safety vestibule there. Here is the general plans. It does include kind of renovation of the current office space to create more space so that way we can have people enter the building. Again, this will be for kind of outside of the main arrival and dismissal times. So main arrival and dismissal will necessarily change. What will change will be what goes on in between those times, so. Do you guys have any other questions about this? Do you guys have any other questions about this?
No. Okay. Do we have any public comment on the high school safety vestibule addition and renovation? Nobody online. Okay. Then we will adjourn the, the public hearing and we will move into commendations. Good news.
Uh, really, it's just kind of summarizing the summer sports. Um, softball had a really good summer. Um, too bad I should've got Rob to stick around here. He could've talked about the season a little bit, but, um, had a really good, really good summer. Um, uh, they finished in the semifinals or quarterfinals?
Regional semifinal.
Regional semifinals. That's right. Regional semifinals. Um, so any other, kind of baseball made it to the regional finals.
Yep. Baseball got beat in substate final by number one team in the state.
Yep. Yep.
Sioux City East.
Yep. It's gotta be by Sioux City East, MRC school, like number one team in the state, um, the, in the substate finals. So one game away from going to state. And then, uh, and that's, again, that's four A versus three A. And, you know, you have always been very successful in three A. It's nice to see that we can hold our own in four A as well. So, um, so yeah, other than that, we have, I mean, we're gonna, we're getting real close to, uh, back-to-school talks. So the good news is, is that, I don't know if it's good news for a lot of people, but we're getting close to the end of a lot of our projects this summer. And, uh, looking forward to kind of starting. We'll have staff start reporting back here, uh, the week of the eighteenth, um, in mass. We'll have some come the week prior for back-to-school, like the early teachers, new teachers, that kind of stuff. But, uh, week of the eighteenth and the kids will be back twenty-fifth. So just all, it's all, it's just a mad dash here at the end of the summer. So.
Did I ask to see our volleyball team, uh, won an all-academic award?
Uh, yes, they did. Yes. I just saw that today.
Was that posted today?
Yeah.
Okay.
Fifth year in a row?
Wow.
What's up, ladies?
Any other commendations? Good news? Okay. Hearing none. We'll move into comments and suggestions. First part in our meeting where we open the floor to, uh, comments that the public may have for the board. Do we have anybody? Okay. Then hearing none, we will move into the consent agenda. Can, or is everything current?
Uh, there is a couple of updates on the personnel sheet. Just give me two seconds and I will just read them. Uh, the two additional, um, are to add Kaylee Main and Bailey Edgewald as paraeducators for this school year. Those were the only two changes to the personnel sheet.
And can we get a motion to approve the consent, consent agenda with the, the updates?
Motion approved.
Second.
Vote please.
Mrs. Shuffle?
Yes.
Mr. Sturm?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Reports, seven point oh-one facility project update, project advocates.
Yep. So, okay.
Jim, you're welcome to come up whenever you want. Did you happen to get that slideshow from Steve?
Um, as you've all probably seen, a lot of activity going on out there. Um, glad to report all's going well, um, on schedule. No major red flags anywhere. Uh, haven't had any big surprises cost-wise. So, um, other than the previously approved sidewalk additional work that we did on both, both facilities, um, really nothing major to speak of as far as costs. So, um, everything's holding really good. But, um, we've got a little presentation somewhere in there. We emailed over that helped me guide my way through. There we go. Um, so a few pictures on here and just kind of do a quick recap by school. Um, the high school is kind of the largest one going on right now. Um, go ahead and click through it a little bit. Um, next slide. So paving project, uh, we are coming to a, uh, end of the phase one, let's call it. Um, the, the large parking lot is poured. The remainder of the road was poured today down to kind of the south part of the existing, or the new lot there. Um, tomorrow gonna be pouring sidewalks around the building. So things are moving good. Uh, looking to, uh, put the striping down at the end of this week and look to, well, we're, we're gonna let some administrative staff into the admin lot here, um, starting tomorrow a little bit to alleviate some parking on the bottom side, uh, get you guys back into the building. But we're looking to flip to phase two, which is the road to the south, um, probably mid-next week, which would be good timing with dead week showing up and not a lot of kids around. So we'll kind of do a transition, open up the north entrance, shut down the south entrance. So paving's going really well. Um, go ahead to the next one. Uh, roofing projects, they went really quick. Uh, they do have a little bit of work to come back and do. They've got to, uh, put all the parapet cap flashing on, which I heard today they're supposed to be here tomorrow to do that. Um, so that went real smoothly. We've done some repair work on the tracks. You can see, kind of see in that picture where they ran the lift around the back of the building for access. So that's all been regraded and we just have to patch a little bit of sidewalk out of the back of the building over there. Next, uh, tennis courts. Kind of fought the weather with these. We had to do quite a bit of, uh, soil prep work to get everything stable for the new slab going down. Right when we took out twelve inches of dirt, all the rain started the last few weeks and we kind of had a pool back there. But, uh, we have got the fill dirt placed. It has passed all the compaction tests required and they're starting to put some underground drainage fields in right now. Um, a little bit more electrical rough in and then a layer of rock. And we'll be seeing that slab here in the next, uh, week and a half, two weeks. We'll start prepping and pour the slab for that.
Potentially.
Potentially.
We just got, we just got word that we have potentially have to do some more floodplain testing. So.
Yeah.
Trying to work with the city on that.
Yeah. Navigating a new issue that came up that has never previously been done with a floodplain development permit for this facility and...
We've done many projects on the same floodplain. Have never had to do this type of testing before. So whatever reason, that's where we're gonna hopefully get some answers from the city. And why now? Because this potentially set us back three to six months and cost the taxpayers an additional ten to twenty thousand dollars. So for whatever this new testing is that we've never had to do before, all of a sudden may have to do now. So.
This is a tennis court.
Yep. Just notified us last, last, last Wednesday, Thursday. So.
And this is city property, right?
Uh, portion of it is, yeah. But it has to do with some kind of a floodway versus a flood zone, but it's all rated the same. So we'll have to, hopefully we can have that meeting with the city soon and talk about it.
Uh, fire alarm system, moving along good. They pretty much have just the gymnasium wing left to what you call device out. All the wires pulled everywhere. They've just gotta go along, around and put on the, the smokeheads, the speakers and the ceilings, all that kind of stuff. The, uh, the new panels are being assembled and wired currently. So that thing's tracking very well. Um, the chiller and the rooftop units, uh, good news. This last week was a big week. The chiller got started up, um, on Monday of last week. Got the building starting to cool down. It's pretty much all in cooling right now. And then Wednesday last week, we did a startup on the three new, um, air handlers that are on the large gym and the weight room. Um, huge performance difference. Um, just cooled the buildings quickly, get rid of the humidity. Um, so it's not a hundred percent done. There's still some control wiring work to do, um, to really get everything talking to the computer and, and be able to be fully tuned. But the building is back cooled right now. So that, that's starting to go pretty good. Uh, middle school, not a lot of work happened at the middle school this year. Uh, really the only thing we did was about eleven thousand square foot of roofing on the south side of the school. Um, that is complete. They do have a little bit of punch list, list work to do, which is just some detail work on reinstalling some gas line, uh, support blocks and stuff like that. So, um, we, we are starting some larger planning for next year's middle school work right now. Um, just had some kickoff meetings today. So we're getting the ball rolling on that. Uh, Titan Hill, um, paving on this project is essentially complete. Um, as far as the paving work itself, we still have to do the striping, uh, backfill, seeding, just kind of cleanup work. Um, click on the next picture. Um, we, we got the drive road in last week. It has been opened up for, for use. Um, the ex, really all that's left to do as far as putting concrete down is part of the extra, uh, change order that we approved. We just have to finish the side along the pool, which, uh, Jim and I have talked, that's not really a critical item right now. Um, so if needed, we're kind of telling the concrete crew to take the, the crew that's been up here, take them down to the high school, start with some of the sidewalks following the, uh, the crew doing the paving there. So, um, all's gone really well with the paving job and they're kind of in cleanup stages right now of it. Uh, the lighting project, uh, they're kind of coming to a close. They have all but two classrooms complete right now that they just need to get access into them to, to get the lights out there. But they're starting on the hallways. The hallways will go much quicker because they're literally just changing the light out, powering it up and moving to the next one. They don't have to do controls and switches and all that. So they'll probably easily double, if not more, their productivity every day when putting those in. So they're projecting right now to be complete August seventh, um, which will give us a couple of weeks ahead of time of, of staff getting back. Uh, the geothermal supplement project, we got started with a, a little bit of prep work on that this last week. Um, they came in and shut the system down for a day. And in that picture, you can kind of see they, they had to tap into the, one of the return lines to allow for the hookups of the, the supplemental equipment we'll be putting in. Uh, by doing that, they, they made it much easier, did a quick shutdown, valved it off. Now everything they're gonna do is kind of just bolt up. And when the equipment shows up, they'll bring in prefabricated piping, bolt up to what's there and just turn valves and be able to get things going. So got the invasive work done early so that when the equipment shows up, even if students are in session, nobody will really even know anything is going on in there. And, um, it'd be pretty quiet and we won't have any more shutdowns or anything. So that, that's going good right now, too. Uh, Creft is the last one. Uh, the Creft lighting project finished a couple of weeks ago. There are a few, like four or six miscellaneous lights in bathrooms and, and oddball places that we're still waiting to get. But that job is essentially complete, other than a few hours of chasing or put some lights in. And then in the last week, the secure entrance has gotten started. Um, they, uh, they put some duck work in a week or so ago. And then just today, the door frame showed up and has been installed. The door's already on and swinging. Um, glass is in and they're doing all the door hardware wiring right now. So there's quite a few bodies in that little space just to knock it out. And, and I, I expect that to be done probably mid-next week to where the doors are actually working and communicating and all the security hardware's working too. So, um, things have gone, gone really well overall and, uh, no incidents with anything. The, the kids have been really good. They're aware of their surroundings and, you know, we, we get some traffic jam ups every now and then when we've got fifteen concrete trucks lined up at the high school. But overall, it, it's gone really well and I appreciate everybody helping out to keep it going that way. Jim, you want to give an update on your little jobs?
Well. Uh, a lot of our projects are moving along. Obviously with everything going on, I'm a little bit nervous. I mean, we're still trying to do the summer things on top of all the other activities going on. So, I mean, our cleaning's a little bit behind schedule in some areas. Um, there's some repairs that we haven't been able to get to yet that we're concerned about getting to. But, I mean, it's kind of was expected for the summer. Uh, but in general, things are going well. Projects are progressing really well. Um, I, I think I'm really happy with where we're at right now for what we're dealing with this summer. I mean, that's just, we're, we're, the painting is starting to look really good in the high school. I don't know if you've done a walkthrough, if you've seen the Commons yet or the gym or, or any of that. Um, that's obviously outside the bond. There's just, um, gosh, there's just so much going on. I don't even know where to start other than, do you guys have any questions for me as to how things are going or, or specific things of interest or?
Well, we can go through and, and briefly, you know, a couple of the other things that we've been doing on there. Um, obviously the athletic field under the bleacher storage, we're moving forward with that. The pavement's done. We got a basic plan from the city of what they want to see from us from, uh, plans to put some storage underneath there. Uh, the middle school epic, uh, intercom system, that should be, that should be here next week and installing that. Um, high school painting, it's, it looks pretty cool. I mean, it looks really nice right now and, uh, should've pulled up some pictures of that. Um, but, uh, it's, it's coming along. Um, the, uh, weight room renovation, the flooring's down. It's all painted. Um, it's looking really nice. The equipment should arrive tomorrow.
Tomorrow morning at nine.
Tomorrow morning. So they'll get that kind of knocked out. Uh...
Wednesday we plan on...
Disruptment replacement. Uh, Chris just started doing that, going around and, uh, switching out all the phones for everybody. Creft, uh, security cameras, door monitoring, I just heard from, um, uh, Prime and they should be starting that as well next week.
Close to be done, if it's not approved.
Oh, they have earlier? Oh, they got it on early. Okay. I had them scheduled the last week. So that's good.
Yep.
So sweet. Um, trophy, uh, high school trophy case renovation. Joe asked me not to share pictures of it until it's done. And then when we do our walkthrough, then you can see the trophy cases and the Commons painted. And, you know, Joe's really our kind of, or Mr. Ben Chaddles really are, um, are, are designer. Uh, he's got the designer eye. So he, uh, we're gonna go down there and, and, um, before school starts and we'll do a tour of all the, all the, uh, updates and, and, you know, again, talk about, you know, Big Bang for relatively small costs. You know, paint does wonders and you, you, I think you'll be very happy to see how the, how the gym and the, and the hallways and the, and the Commons area turn out. So, and, uh, Raptor Emergency Response System, they've been in all summer long, um, installing the, the LED lights and the, and the system throughout. We did, now we just gotta get some training and, and get that, um, up and going. Um, Titan Hill, uh, high school door contacts, disforid storage. Um, I'll have to double check with Chris. I'm not sure where we're at with that right now. Uh, Creft Playground, they'll be here next week, do the demolition of the Creft Playground and then they'll move up. So plan is they'll demo Creft Playground and then they'll go demo Titan Hill Playground and then they'll go back and install, uh, Creft Playground and then they'll install Titan Hill Playground. So Creft right now has a, um, done date of, um, August twenty-second. So kids come back the twenty-fifth. So, um, I did see some advertisements out there for popsicles on the playground. Um, I would not anticipate having popsicles on the playground. So popsicles on the playground might be popsicles.
Parking lot.
In the parking lot. So that'll be our playground for, until. And then Titan Hill, um, luckily they're a little older. I mean, they'll have to make do with some of the grassy areas and that kind of stuff until approximately the second week of September. And then, then they'll be all done as well. So, uh, and then we were talking about high school. We were talking about these two things. So, um, yeah, do you guys have any other questions, comments of, of Jim? I mean, I, I want to give big kudos to Jim and his staff. They, every summer, it's, you know, it's, it's funny. Like if you work for a school, people automatically think that, you know, you get summers off. So I can't tell you how many people come up to, you know, me, I mean, and, and I'm not, I mean, I'm not even as busy as Jim in the summer, but I'm sure there's people go up to Jim and be like, aren't you glad it's summer? And...
No, no, I'm not.
No.
We have made a lot of progress this year, though. Things are starting to look really good. It's really exciting. I think it's an exciting time to be here. So, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of buzz. A lot of people, you know, you see coaches come into the weight room and they're like, wow, this is great. And you see them going to the gym and they're like, wow, this is great. And so there's a lot of activity. You're seeing some jealousy between middle school teachers who haven't had their project yet and high school teachers. And the middle school's a little bit jealous at what's going on over there right now. So, I mean, but there's, there's a lot of buzz. A lot of people are talking. Lot of progress being made. So it's stressful. It's...
Jim must be feeling pretty good, though, because I did notice he, he, he has taken a whole two days off this summer.
I did. I did. I took two days off. And that was, um...
Two more days than he's taken out the last two summers. I'm like, Jim, you gotta, you gotta breathe, man. So.
My wife treats me pretty good and I kind of like to keep her. So.
Yeah, that's good.
I figured I better, I better take her somewhere. So.
For sure.
Yep. But I will say, part, part of the projects that we're doing, especially repairs, have become more difficult because EPA has changed refrigerant guidelines. So now they're coming out with all these new refrigerants. The old refrigerants are obsolete. So now all these manufacturers have chosen their refrigerant and trying to keep a... So now all these manufacturers have chosen their refrigerant and trying to keep being everything kind of somewhat uniform with the new refrigerants and all the new guidelines. The new equipment, it's really hard to get sometimes. So that's also delaying some things. Just getting equipment in and being able to schedule projects and repairs and even get parts has been a challenge. So something doesn't get done. That's part of the reason.
You can only do so much.
That's right.
Time and money.
That's right.
Not unlimited amounts of either. So-
Correct. All right. Do you have anything for me?
When, when are the security cameras gonna be set up in the parking lot?
Well, I don't even think they're pulling, they're running, okay, when they did the parking lot project, they ran all of the piping and stuff to the lights.
But they didn't feed it yet.
It has not been fed yet. So that, I don't anticipate that being done. Definitely bad time.
We don't even have quotes yet on, on cameras for the parking lot because we wanted to make sure the layout was done and ready to go. So- I was just asking, so in, in relation to the parking lot, we talked about opening up some of the spots for admin as of next week.
In the front lot.
Some sort of monitoring out there then?
Okay. Right. And also we're still gonna leave, what we're gonna do is, is once we open up that front lot completely, we will move all the cones and everything back and it will be only be open to that front parking lot.
Okay.
And so the rest of the lot will still be not accessible until that concrete's cured, the lines have all been painted and we're kind of back to full business.
Yeah, that was my main question as to when, when the full lot's gonna be open again. So-
Yeah.
Okay.
The track surfacing, security for that will be a challenge, just simply because we're gonna have to do it with that four foot fence that's around the track because part of the fencing is still out where the, where the sidewalk is being added by the football field. So we'll change out all the locks. We'll put up signs. We'll, we'll do everything we can. We just hope people follow the directions. Yep.
We're, we're taking, we're taking a, we're, we're pool going as far as who's gonna be the first ones to put the black marks down on the new parking lot. So-
That, that was kind of what I was thinking was the midnight cookies or something like that.
I think the maintenance guys would like to take the maintenance trucks out and just get it over with.
That was it. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
7.02 superintendent update.
Um, I kind of shared mine during the good things. I kind of jumped the gun. Yeah. Basically my only updates right now are where we are. Full bore going into, uh, school's gonna be starting here soon. Registration is August 4th. So excited for parents to come out. We have all the back to school stuff out online right now. If you're watching and you know, you haven't filled out your registration stuff, get, get on that now so we can get going. And then we'll have some back to school nights. We will have our, our whole teacher just for the, for the board to know, we will have our, when the whole staff gets together, it'll be on the 20th. So we'll have a 20th at 8:30 AM. We'll have a welcome back staff. So that'll be in the auditorium. We'll have breakfast and that's starting at 7:30 that morning. Same thing we've done last few years. And then, um, outside of that, yeah, we're just trying to, trying to button everything up this summer and, and get going. So-
Okay. Any questions, comments? Okay. We'll move into discussion items. 8.01, high school safety vest to goal addition and renovation, hearing approval.
This is just to approve the specs as you saw them and then the, the, you know, we sent an RFP. That was what you guys saw and then understanding the estimated price was 1.5 million. And we did get the bids back and I'll, we'll do that next, but-
Okay. Then we'll just move into that. 8.02, the bid approval.
So we did get back, uh, last Thursday, they had to submit bids for us. The bids that we got back were Meck O'Hany, 1.512, Keyflex 1.631. The lowest bid was Elevate Construction at 1355. Beckenhour Construction 1550. Mark, uh, is it Mark B? Mark 7? Mark 7 Enterprises 1.906. D.R. Anderson 1, 1508 and then Pinnacle Construction, uh, 1338. So Elevate Construction did get the bid. Uh, what ends up happening is then we, um, our architects will go and vet them and go through all the documents and make sure that everything was provided, you know, true to spec, make sure that, and then they'll check references. They're currently working with Elevate right now and two Millard projects and then Elevate has a very successful presence in Omaha. They've done everything from retail to schools. They did the UNO Mavericks Performance Center. So they've done some really big projects and, and they have a very good reputation around town. So then again, I, I send out the information to, to our attorney and just say, you know, have you heard of anything? You know, have they declared bankruptcy or anything like that? And the only way, according to the state Iowa and, and Iowa code that we can deny a bid is if, um, is if they are not a responsible or a responsive partner. And there's nothing to say that Elevate wouldn't, would do nothing but, you know, provide us a quality products. And then in addition, Holly Hunt, who's one of the co-owners, she's actually a 2003 graduate of Lewis Central. So that's a, that's a good thing. Anytime we can see people who are invested in Lewis Central in one point or another. We actually had a couple of people on here that bid that were invested in Lewis Central. I always like to see that. So very positive, very positive things. So recommendation from BBH is, not a BBH, BCDM is to go with Elevate Construction for $1,355,948. But I will say the fact that we got seven bids was, I mean, that's great. I remember 2019 when we got bids for my last project, Missouri Valley. I think we got like one for this or two for that. So getting seven to eight, nine bids on all these projects is, I mean, I'm still like, holy moly. So-
Any other questions, comments regarding the bid or the process? Okay. Then we will move into 8.03, activity conference realignment.
So this is just a good time. Again, there's no, um, there's no decisions being made tonight. It's simply if you guys after hearing a couple of people give feedback, listening to Mr. Dermody and I talk, you know, is there, do you guys have any additional questions for Mr. Dermody? And again, I would highly recommend you guys go through and read all of the comments that were submitted. There's some really, really good comments and they're on both sides. So-
I do have a question and one of the coaches brought it up and it was a question I actually had even before they spoke, but I've heard that in the past that because Sioux City, it is so top heavy. The votes always obviously go Sioux City's way. Any discussions that have been had or, you know, talking about Harlan, Dennison, Glenwood not moving? Why they didn't move or if there will be maybe something to help that in the future?
I haven't had a lot of conversation with those schools other than, you know, from us. I think most of them, Harlan, Harlan did mention, I've had a couple of different conversations with Harlan over various things from scheduling football to this. And they've got declining enrollment and I think they, they see that they're just, as time goes on, maybe right now they're, they're an okay fit for that conference, but two or three, five years from now they're, they don't feel like they're going to be because of their enrollment trend. I know that's where Harlan's at. I think Glenwood, um, and, and talking to Jeff, it's just again, informal conversation. I think the travel distance was a little bit, a little bit of an issue with him because it's, it's obviously a little bit farther for them. But all of them, uh, Dennison, I believe is the only one that inquired. I think Dennison checked into, you know, what the constitution of the conference looked like. So they did, but, but I feel like they, they believe because of their enrollment, you know, they're, they're fairly close to us. They're the only school in the Hawkeye Ten that really is fairly close to us from an enrollment standpoint. They did look. I just don't think they feel like the timing is right for them. And you know, I, the, the, you know, the voting thing and I, you know, I was a coach and coached baseball and, and at TJ years and years ago. And from a coaching perspective, you know, you're very, very competitive and you know, sometimes that perception happens and I just my conversations with Jeff Navat, he was the AD at AL right now. I know he doesn't feel that way. He feels like the, the conference as a whole, it looks out for council buffs. I know that they've had, uh, schools to the north. I, I believe MOC, uh, Storm Lake. I, I can't remember who else. I think there were three schools, Sioux Center maybe, but there were three schools that inquired about coming into the MRC and the, and they told them no, because they're not looking to expand to the north. And that's a, a question I specifically asked them. Like if we do this, are you gonna look to expand to the north two years later and we end up driving to Marie Soren City? And he said, no, that they, they have repeatedly told those schools that they have no interest in, in expanding to the north. So that says a little bit about how they feel about council buffs. Um, is, is so, and I think that that was their goal. I think they thought that that would be an ideal situation if all four of us would do that and we'd have six and six, which would be, in my opinion, would be great. But going back to what we said before, we can only control us. It's, I just don't think those, the other Hawkeye Ten schools that were invited are, are there yet. Again, more my opinion, but I just, the, you know, the, the growing sentiment of the Hawkeye Ten that Lewis Central is not a fit concerns me a little bit and, and where the conversation is gonna go down the road. And I, and I'm not saying they're wrong. If you look at that chart right there that's up there and you're just looking at classification or enrollment numbers, it's easy to, to formulate that opinion that Lewis Central's not a fit for the Hawkeye Ten when you're, when you're looking at those things only. So I think some of those schools are, the, the sentiment is growing that Lewis Central's not a fit. So I, you know, I don't know where that goes. At some point in time do they vote us out? You know, I, I know that, and again, I don't know this, but I, I, I know that the schools that they're trying to invite in want to know what we're doing first. Because they're, they're probably more likely to join the Hawkeye Ten if we're not there, just because of our size is what I hear. So I don't, like I said before, I was kind of hinting at it and I guess I'll just want to hit at it now. I, I, I think this our fit in the Hawkeye Ten and is going to continue to be a question and, and so I, I, part of me worries that we're kind of kicking the can down the road, so to speak, if, if but, but I, you know, ultimately that's, that's a community decision, but I do have concerns in that area.
Well, one of the things that didn't, didn't get discussed was the state passed a law that requires the both the boys and the girls associations to develop a, a conference committee. So the Iowa Association of High School Sports for the Boys and the Girls Association both now have a, are they doing a joint committee? Is that what they're doing?
Yeah.
So they, so they're doing a joint committee, which is supposed to be reviewing conferences and making recommendations or final saves or on who gets to be in what conference. So-
Oh, so the state may take the decision out of our hands anyway.
State may take the decision out of our hands anyway. So all it would take was, is a couple of complaints. From what I, originally I, I assumed that the committee was going to be very much a, uh, like a, like a sounding board or an investigative committee, but they actually, if you want to move conferences from one to the next, you actually have to apply to that committee. So and from what I understand is if you want to be in a conference and, and they're not letting you in, you can appeal to the committee. So I'm, I would just think it's a matter of time before they make the concession of, and I don't know this for sure, but the concession of somebody saying, we want Lewis Central, Lewis Central doesn't belong in this conference. And they make an appeal to the committee and the committee just says, okay, you're, you gotta go find a new conference, you know? They'll make a recommendation. So there's, there's more, there's more at stake than just us saying, you know, let's, let's take a look, you know, it's, I don't, I don't wanna, you know, again, I'm not, I'm not from here. I've been here three years. I like it here. It's a great place. But you know, I don't have the memories of taking a nice, uh, countryside stroll, you know, to Creston or, or, you know, Atlantic, you know, I, I've, I've not, I've experienced rivalries between us and Glenwood and us and Harlan. And those are a lot of fun rivalries. And I think those rivalries will continue to stay. Just like if we stay in the Hawkeye Ten, we'll continue to play MRC schools. There's only so many schools on this side of the state that, that we're gonna play. So for us saying, oh, we stay in the Hawkeye Ten, we're not gonna go to Sioux City. That's false too. We went to Sioux City three times this summer for baseball softball. Like that's, so the difference is, is when you schedule games, and I think, uh, Coach Riggs, you know, kind of mentioned this, the difference between, the, the main conversation about the conferences is um, is it gonna change? Should we play? No, not necessarily. We're gonna still play a lot of the Hawk Ten schools. We're still gonna play a lot of the MRC schools. The difference is right now is we have to schedule all the MRC school, or all the Hawk Ten schools first, which means that we have to schedule the St. Aubert, the, the, uh, Shenandoah, the Red Oaks. We have to schedule all those schools that um, are shrinking in enrollment, but not only that, but they can't offer us, you know, a varsity JV reserve, uh, and freshman game. They can only offer us two.
Can, so on that, on that train of thought, so can the Sioux City schools offer them? Because I'm kind of doubting that council buffs can offer us them.
Again, it kind of goes back to, to sport. Uh, so I'll use volleyball as an example. It's coming up and I was actually working on some of the schedules for, we do a reserve. So we do four levels in volleyball. Glenwood is the only other Hawkeye Ten school I've, I've been able to get to play in that fourth level. It's actually the third level, but of, of four. Uh, TJ and AL now do. We, we play them. Um, I, I struggle. We play in Omaha a lot with that group because I, I have a hard time finding schools that have that fourth level volleyball. For example, that's one example, but we play a lot in Omaha because that's just makes it easier. It's, it's less travel. Uh, but we do play TJ and AL. So in those sports, um, basketball, you know, girls' basketball, it's hard to use as an example. The numbers in girls' basketball are down everywhere. So it's, it's hard to say. I, I think from a number standpoint, you're gonna, you're gonna have a, a better chance of, of scheduling all the levels that you need at the MRC than you are the Hawkeye Ten.
So it's possible, but it's not a guaranteed enrollment is high. So athletics is high?
You can pick from. I mean, the, the numbers would-
Yeah. I mean, you, you look at those numbers, they're, they're just automatically gonna have more numbers. I mean, yeah. I, I think if you look at the, the top of the Hawkeye Ten, it's gonna be the same as the MRC. It's where you get to the bottom and the lower numbers.
So the, the difference like we talked about, I was talking about this with one of the community members and they said, we really like those rivalries with Glenwood and Harlan. And I said, I think, I think the difference is, is instead of scheduling the Hawkeye Ten first and, and having to schedule the, the, the St. Aubert, the Red Oak, the Kemper, the Shenandoah. And then after that, finding fill-in games with, with the western area of Des Moines and Sioux City schools. Now, if you, if you were to make the switch to MRC, you would schedule the MRC first and then you would fill your, the rest of your schedule with the Dennison, Glenwood, Harlan, um, Crest. So you'd fill out the upper half of the, of the, of the Hawkeye Ten. We probably wouldn't end up playing the bottom half of our Hawkeye Ten unless we had a lot more openings, you know? So so that's probably the, the difference is which one do you fill your schedule with first? You know, school's your same size or school's smaller and then try to fill in. And then the, the question that, um, that I read, that statement that I read out loud about going, you know, looking at the Des Moines area schools, again, both of those conferences, you know, the, the, the travel has increased almost double and then, and then, uh, one or two, they, they don't want us, you know, they, so-
A comment I saw a lot, and you two can speak to if this would be a complete nightmare, but I saw a lot about being independent. Is that even an option?
We, we talked about this a little bit today.
I, I don't, I, I said to Dr. Heskey, tell me, tell me a school in the state of Iowa that's independent. Arizona. So I mean, it would make it very, very difficult to come up with a, with a 40 game baseball or softball schedule when you're an independent. You don't have any conference games scheduled for you.
And logistically, I just feel like scheduling that would be-
Yeah, it would be, it would, it would, it would almost be impossible.
Well, one of the things he talked about was like, look at volleyball, for instance. All the conference volleyball games are played on Tuesday and Thursday night. So if you're not in a conference, you have no Tuesday, Thursday night games. All your volleyball games will be played on Mondays and Saturdays. So-
Thank you.
Yeah. And Coach Riggs talked about, and he made a great point about the 32 game schedule. I liked the 32 game schedule to, to some extent. I, I know he said you'd go to Sioux City six times during the year. We go there three or four times now. But now your kids are only playing twice a week. And we play four or five times a week now to try to get to that 40 game because we, we only, only, only certain schools in the Hawkeye Ten will play, do we play double headers with. So yeah, you're on your, you're on the road to Sioux City six times during the year. You also get probably at least two nights a week off where kids get to be kids rather than playing four or five nights.
When I coached in Missouri Valley, we traveled six days a week. We practiced on Sundays. That was it. It was only practice day.
So I, I, there's not a, there really isn't a perfect scenario to, to either one of, either one of the conference choices. It's, it's a matter of, to me, where, where we fit best and, and all of the factors that our community think are important.
What do you think is the biggest, well, for me, it, it, it's like a pros and cons list. So what would you say is our biggest pro and what would you say is our biggest con for moving to the MRC? So what would you say is our biggest pro and what would you say is our biggest con for moving to the MRC?
You know, looking at what, what our, what our people think is important, I think the biggest pro obviously is the level of competition. I know some people don't, don't think that, that the Hawkeye Ten, or that the MRC is that much better than the Hawkeye Ten. But I think top to bottom, it probably is. I mean, just, just the size of the schools and the number of kids they have that, that, that play sports. You're just, you have more kids to choose from. So I, sometimes how good your middle is determines how, how tough that conference is. So, so I think that's a huge pro. I think preparation for, for postseason, which was another one that was really important, I think is a pro. Our baseball team, our baseball team went 19-1 in the Hawkeye Ten this year and didn't have very many close games. And then we went to, so we, we played Sioux City East, who's ranked number one state, to, to go to state. And, you know, very close game, a couple of mistakes here or there. So we were right in that game. And so to myself, I'm thinking if we have a little bit tougher schedule night in and night out, you know, are we, are we a little bit more prepared for that scenario? You know, I, I, I think from a competitive standpoint, I think that's probably the pro. The con obviously is going to be the, the travel, particularly in, in your basketball and your baseball softball. That, that's just, those are the sports where you play way more games, so you'll be on the road more.
I think one of the, one of the other notes is, you know, people talk about, when you read through the comments, you know, somebody made a comment about, there's more ranked schools in the Hawkeye Ten than there are in the MRC. And I think there's also schools from 1A, 2A, you know, those Hawkeye Ten schools are ranked in 1A, 2A. You know, and I'm not saying there's anything about 1A, 2As, it's not competitive for 4A. But you look at us, our baseball team was consistently last, since I've been here, we've been ranked like number one in 3A, like all three years I've been here. We get to 4A and now we're not ranked number one, like because there are, there's just that many more schools. So when you have a lot of schools that are playing in that 3A, 4A division, it's much harder to be ranked in 3A, 4A than it is to be ranked in 1A, 2A. So, and I, and I'm not trying to discredit anything about the schools. It's trying to, you know, say, you know, because if you're ranked, I mean, good team's a good team. But it's not very often that you'll find a top-ranked team in 1A or 2A that can also compete with the top-ranked teams in 3A, 4A.
That's true.
You know, it's just, it's, it's just different bodies. It's different. You know, we, we see that with, like going to track this year. How many state records did we break in girls' track this year? Or not state rec, yeah, our, our school records in track.
Yeah, David, probably half of them. We probably broke half our school records this year in girls' track and two, two or three placers at, at state meetings.
We won three medals at state because we were in 4A instead of 3A and we broke half of our, half of our school records. So it's just, the level of competition is just very different in 4A than 1A or 2A.
All right, so we switched conferences. We're not in the top three or five. And now the community wants, or, you know, your community support is diminishing. Your feeder programs are diminishing. What does that look like to you?
Well, I hope that never happens. I honestly, I, I just don't have a lot of, a lot of conversations about conference championships. And, and if you look up on there, that, that was, that didn't rank very high on, on importance to people. I, I think postseason, I think postseason, and, and I think we've been a little bit spoiled. We've had a lot of success. And, and so people just expect us to, to go to state and, and have success. And so, you know, it's hard to say, but I, I, I think ultimately the success that you're having, whether it be at a state level or a conference level, that's always about looking in the mirror, not looking at who you're, who you're playing against.
You'll see preparation for postseason play is actually number two as far as most important. And conference, conference championships. They, a lot of people ranked it three. You know, that was in the middle of the road, first conference championships. Here's the deal, conferences are just different than they were like when I was in high school. Like if we, I played in the NINAC in northeast Nebraska. And if the championship basketball game in the NINAC was, it was like a state-level event. Like gym was just packed to the gills. I've been to championship games in both the WIC and the Hawkeye Ten for, you know, basketball or volleyball as well. Just not the same. Like the, the, it's just almost like college. Like nobody cares as much if you're a Big Ten champion anymore. Nobody cares, like, not to say the conferences aren't important, I don't want to say that, but people want to see how are you going to finish at state. I think a good, a good point you made to me one time, Mr. Dermody, was when you talked about football, the best thing that ever happened to us was getting bumped up a class. Because in that, people were nervous about us being able to compete when we went to 4A. And not only did we compete, but we've gone to the Dome six years in a row.
Yeah, seven out last eight.
Was that?
Seven out last eight.
Seven out last eight, you know, and so I think, and all it took was for us to be forced to play a little better competition. And it was like boom. I mean, a lot of other factors. I mean, we have, we have probably one of the best-run youth football programs in, in America, maybe. I don't know. It's fantastic, so.
Yeah, and I think conference championships have, I think the, the value of winning the conference championship has diminished a little bit from a Hawkeye Ten perspective. Because when we win the Hawkeye Ten conference, we've, we've won the conference that we're twice as big as every school except for two. So sometimes you look, say, well, I mean, maybe we should be winning the conference.
Well, we, we talked about that. When a 4A school plays a 1A school, even if the 1A school is ranked number one in state, when the 4A school beats the 1A school, people don't think that's a big deal. They're like, oh yeah, well, you're a 4A school, you beat a 1A school. I'd be like, yeah, but they're number one in the state. And they're like, yeah, but they're 1A, you're 4A, you're four times the size. But when a 1A school beats a 4A school, even if they're number one in the state, that makes a 4A school look really bad. You know, so playing 1A schools, even if the competition, like even if it helps our players get better from a, from a perspective, like if you're talking about perspective, like that, that's not a positive for us, you know? But, so you got to balance that. Like I said, having the occasional great game with a 1A school and getting our kids prepared because they're a really highly competitive team, that's great. Paying a bunch of 1A and 2A schools, most of which are not very competitive, not, not great.
Well, and you talked about the added cost to Sioux City. Do you have that in your budget or what will be removed to make up for that?
Again, as far as travel budget, that's, that's somebody else's, somebody else takes a closer look at than I do. But hopefully, we're taking, we're traveling less on our non-conference schedule. You know, because, because we have, you know, a little bit more competitive schedule. You know, I look at the, you know, if, if that were to play out, I was just thinking in my head after Coach Riggs talked about that in baseball and softball. We've, we went to, we went to Des Moines, or, or on average, we go to Des Moines probably four times a year in baseball. We were, we were, we were going to Sioux City already. So we may, we may go to Des Moines less. I, I don't know. If you look at the travel time and you look at the averages, I don't, I don't know as though it honestly is, is that much more, to be honest with you. I, I'd have to pencil and paper it.
To me, I'll be honest, the drive time to the schools doesn't mean anything to me because I don't drive a horse and buggy. So, I mean, whether I go north, whether I go east, it really doesn't matter.
There's six schools, there's six schools in the, in the MRC that are beyond an hour twenty. There's four schools in the Hawkeye Ten that are beyond an hour twenty. So you're talking about two more trips. But again, we're already going to Sioux City for part of the games. And even if we go to the MRC, we're still going to go to Harlan. And Harlan is, you know, an hour away. So.
The flip side of that is we have one school in city, in our current conference, but we'll have two schools within 10 minutes.
10 minutes, yeah.
15 minutes, yeah.
Yeah, that was obviously one of my biggest things, looking at it. And comparison-wise, I, I don't think that there is going to be a significant difference in that realm of things.
Thank you.
Is this the first time we've been in, given an invitation to join the MRC?
I was thinking about that today. I know that there were conversations about this more than six years ago because I was the AD at the time. I remember there being an article in the paper. I don't think that there was a, and you may, I don't think there was a formal invitation then, but I know that it was a topic of conversation. Yeah.
I, I don't remember a formal invitation. I remember.
Conversation.
A conversation, yeah, yeah. And if we would vote this, what's the timeline? Is it two years from now, a year from now, two years from now? Is that?
So we'll have to figure that out. The, the invitation was for '26, '27.
Okay.
But the Hawkeye Ten bylaws say you are expected to give two years.
Two years, okay.
So we'll have to, we'll have to figure, we'll have to figure that out. I, my goal would be, would go '26, '27. If you're going to make the move, get it, get it done and go. But at the same time, i- i- if the Hawkeye Ten's going through change and they're, they're having schools come in, they're going to, they're going to want us to leave. At the same time, those schools are coming in, so they're not continually doing conference schedules over and over with schools leaving and coming at different times. So haven't gone down that road yet. But the invite was for '26, '27.
And then if the board wouldn't vote for this, the Hawkeye Ten can vote us out? And we have to move somewhere?
Yeah.
Right?
Correct.
Okay. And so basically, we're looking at it now, so we're making decisions for Lewis Central, not being forced by the Hawkeye Ten to make that decision.
Correct, correct.
Or potentially the state, if that committee wants to get involved.
Right.
Like I said, we don't know how that's going to get involved yet.
And what is that timeframe? I mean, they have committee already in place?
They're developing the committee now, right?
Yeah, I talked to one of the associate directors at the, yeah.
So July 1.
They, they have not been given a lot of guidance, so that, I think the law just passed. And now people are in the process of, of trying to interpret what the law actually says.
This way it goes.
I talked to one of the associate directors from the Boys Association today, and he said they are awaiting guidance from the DE. So I think right now that the Department of Ed's trying to interpret their role and what it needs to look like. And then the associations, they'll give them guidance and then they'll go in there.
It could be a year before they even.
He told me that they will, they will, they are getting that information. They're going to return, that they'll try to get back to me by Thursday.
Okay.
I mean, the way I view it right now, the MRC, where the MRC when it comes to voting is you have the three Sioux City high schools. That's three votes. I'm sure that Sergeant Bluff doesn't always get along with the Sioux City schools. Sure that Healan doesn't always get along with Sioux City schools. If we were to join, we would join the CB schools and we would have three votes. So it'd be this, like right now, it's two versus three, really, you know? So then if you add us, it's three versus three. So evens the playing field a little bit. My, and like again, the easy path, honestly, is to stay with the Hawkeye Ten. Like that's the easy path. Like that's, that's, you stay, we know it, we know the way it is, and we just, we let the cards of fate be where they go, you know? And this, this would be, this would be the alternative. This would be something new. But at the same time, as I think about it, you know, a year ago, I told Mr. Dermody, absolutely not, I'm not doing that. But then as you start looking at it, you're like, I don't know much changes for us, you know? As far as scheduling or anything, I, I don't know that we will still play all the same teams that we do now. There's not, nothing really changes. So then the question is, do you, and I love playing devil's advocate, by the way, this is why I'm doing this, because it's your job to make the decision, not mine. So I'm going to make it more complicated for you. So to play devil's advocate, if we're going to play all the same teams anyway, you know, why make the switch? You know?
Right.
But at the same time, again, I'm not one that likes to sit back and have people tell us what to do, especially when I feel like we're, we're, you know, we can stand on our own two feet. So it's, it's just, it's just a tough decision. But again, I don't think it's, I think fortunately, I don't think there's a, there's a, I don't think there's a lose option here, you know? We go to a new conference, we play a little bigger schools, but we get to still play the same rivalries that we have now. Little bit more of a travel for some nights, but then like baseball, softball, we have more nights free during the summer because we play all double headers, you know? So, you know, versus staying in the Hawkeye Ten and then we'll still go up to Sioux City and we'll still play those teams because that's really the only options we have. So.
And then they can vote us out?
Yep, MRC could vote us out too, if we go up there and start beating them.
Is there a chance that the state committee ends up making new conferences?
I don't, I don't know if they would go that far to where they'd go in and, and give everybody a conference, but they do it in football, so you never know.
Well, we've heard that, that that's the, there, there's a possibility, because like, well, they do districting in football is what it's called, right? So you have districts, so there's no conference sports in football. They could end up doing districting in a, in a lot of other sports as well. So there's, there's a couple of people that are on their, their board that would like to see that happen, but they don't have the votes to do it, from what I understand. That would be interesting too. Again, it's, we can't control any of that, like. It is interesting though, because at first, when they started this committee, that's what the legislators were talking about, is they wanted, and it all starts because of those eastern schools and really because of private schools, because people don't like the private schools in their conferences because they win. And so then they wanted to make a law that basically said, you know, the, the, the state association needs to come up and they need to create conferences, okay? Well, then a lot of people were like, well, wait a minute, don't, don't mess with our conferences. So now it's, then it became a, we're, we're going to have them do advisory. You're going to advise schools of who should be in what conference, how you're going to. So that's, I anticipated this committee coming out and basically giving like recommendations for schools. But now I'm being told by the schools that are looking to move or shift or whatever, that they have to apply to these, to this committee to approve their alignment with this new conference. And if they don't get in the conference, they can apply to this committee to basically force their way into the conferences. So now that feels like the committee is expanding again. And again, it's all probably based on interpretation and what they're trying to figure out, what is their scope? So.
And if the state does step in and start to determine who's in what conference, that's, that sheet right there, that data that's up on the board, that's, that's what will be used. That, those would be the, the factors. Football is the same way. Football, and, and, and I don't mean this as a negative and, and on Harlan at all because it's football and it's not even conference-related, but it's a little bit of how just the shift in enrollment is, is changing how, how people do things. So in football, we, we have a district that state gives us, so those are, that's the five games we play in district. The four non-district games, the state also determines who those are, but they give you a little bit of a say on who you play. So we, we all put seven teams on a list that we would like to play for non-district. And if you put somebody one or two, and that school puts you one or two, they'll guarantee you that game. Well, we redistrict this year, and so when we went in, we put our seven teams that we want to play for non-district, well, zero teams, and the state put Lewis Central on the list, nobody. And in the past, we've always had Harlan. Harlan was always a, that was always our simple conversation. Hey, you're putting us one, we're going to put you one. Well, after we played them in football last year, after the game was over with, they told, their coaches told our coaches, we're done playing you guys. You guys have gotten too big, you're twice our size. It's just not a good game for us to play anymore. So Harlan, Harlan's, they're, they're playing Underwood. And actually, the state is making them play us one more time in football. So they did put them on the schedule. But, but Harlan, Harlan's playing Underwood. Harlan, you know, they were trying to get trainer and Clorinda to play non-district. So again, I'm not telling that, telling that story to diminish Harlan. I'm just saying that where the conference is going from a growing standpoint, from an enrollment standpoint, I'm just concerned about Lewis Central's future in, in the conference.
Right. Well, and then that also supports that, even though we've been in the Hawkeye Ten for all these years, '55, or it was Hawkeye Eight first and Hawkeye Ten, things change. We're growing, so we need to change too. And I don't know if right now is the time, but I'm glad we have the discussion so we have this information when we have to make the decision.
Any other questions, comments for Mr. Dermie?
So if they were to vote us out, does that automatically give us an invitation to go to the Missouri River?
No. So if we, if we were to decline the invitation now and then turn around and that happens, then we would have to, then we have to go through, we'd have to apply to go to the MRC. Which concerns me. We tell them no now and then we get left out and then we come back.
Hey, never mind. We want to come with you.
Well, I get, I get more nervous about the fact that if we deny, and they have three schools in the north that say we want in, is it, is it easier for them to say, let's go north? And even if we lose Council Bluffs, and I guess we could just have an intercity league with us, three schools, just our own little tiny conference. So, but, you know, like I said, we, we, you guys, it's just based on what can we control right now with our, and I would, I would go back and read the comments. Again, like the people that spoke tonight were obviously very in favor of staying with the Hawkeye Ten. There's a lot of people online that, obviously the majority of people online are in favor of going to the MRC. So I think even though they didn't come and talk, I think you need to read through their comments and take their feedback as well. So.
Some insightful comments.
There are some funny comments. There are some funny comments. Just like anything.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you for all your time tonight. We'll move on to eight point oh four, Black Box HVAC repair bid.
Okay, so this is that, this is that, and if Jim was here, he would, he would cuss out new, new technology, because apparently they put in, in this new HVAC, now they put in these aluminum coils instead of, I don't even know what this is, like, it used to be steel coils, now they're aluminum coils, and aluminum coils. He thinks they're junk, but that's what comes in, all new stuff now, so. But they can be good if they're installed the right, like, a certain way. Now, the, this, our Black Box HVAC was installed to spec, but it was done not in the way, but in the best way. You know, it was like, you're good enough type of deal. So we've been having issues with it ever since we got it going. The second we ran out of warranty with it, they, the company that installed it had nothing to do with us, which makes sense, we're out of warranty, like, that's, it is what it is. So Jim has worked with a couple different companies, trying to figure out how to, how to fix these. And now I think we're just gonna go straight to train. It's, it's a train technology. We're gonna have them come out and they'll fix it, and then they'll give us this, a small warranty to be done with it as well, so. But there's two circuits need to be repaired, Circuit One, twenty-one thousand, one fifty-six, and Circuit Two. So Jim's recommendation is just do it, be done with it, and then that way, we, we know it's, we know it's good. If they come out and do it, at the same time that we're still having those other HVAC work done, he thinks he can make sure that they, he thinks our, like, lamp will do us a solid and, and kinda help, kinda look through it when they're done, and make sure that, like, at least another engineer has had an eye on it, so they know it's, you know, fixed the proper way, so.
Any questions, comments?
I hate sometimes you just get a dud, I guess, you know, just like trucks and everything else, but.
I think that was part of the COVID, I guess.
Yeah.
Um, since we were building during that time, I think this is kind of the casualty or something from it, because I don't think, I know, we had issues with contractors and getting supplies and getting everything. And so I have a feeling that's what this mostly...
It could be, and, and I, like I said, if Jim was here, he could tell you, but he's like, well, you're supposed to install it using, using these materials, and this, and this. And he goes, and they didn't use it, they used an inferior material, but it was still okay.
It's up to code.
It's up to code, but it's not the right, so anyway.
Right.
I, I know you've talked about it one time with him, I can't remember what he was talking about, but...
The A coils.
Yeah, I have no idea. They didn't go to HVA schools, or HVAC school. Apparently, they didn't go to alphabet school either, you know, can't get them all right.
So was that for complete units? They couldn't have been?
Nope, that's just doing all of the...
Just coils and...
Yep, yep, doing all the coils, basically repaste, replacing a lot of the, a lot of the mechanical portion of it, so. Way less than replacing them, but still a good chunk of change.
Yeah, that's what, after I asked them, I'm like, yeah, you're not changing at all for that.
No, it'd be a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Move on to eight point oh five, track maintenance bid.
So track is, was installed in twenty fourteen, obviously, we're eleven years, you're supposed to do, they're only made to last about eight to ten years, so we're a year beyond it. They can do one maintenance coat on it, and basically what that is, is they take a, like a rubber fill substance, and they go and they spray it all on, all the way around the track, and it fills all the cracks, and it basically makes it like a new surface, and then you can get another eight to ten years out of it. We are right at that cusp of them not being able to do it. They came out and gave us a quote in the spring, but all their dates were chosen, and we, I'm like, well, because you have to basically be off it for a week. And I'm like, and the only dates they gave us were like football season. They're like, oh, we can come in on a Monday and you'll play by Friday night, and I said, we're gonna practice. We also have like JV games, and junior high games, and freshman games, and reserve games, and, you know, that happened during the week. We just can't abandon a field for a week during the season. So then I said, I'm gonna carry it over to next year, we'll do it next summer. And they said, they said, well, if you have a tough winter, he's like, you might not be able to. You, we might have to scrape it and redo it, which could cost, you know, the budget for that is three to four hundred thousand dollars. And I said, well, that's not good, but we didn't have any other option, I couldn't be off of it. So then, apparently, they're ahead of schedule somehow, or somebody fell off the schedule, and they had June twenty-eighth, which is next week, or July twenty-eighth, next week, open, and that happens to be our dead week. It is like the prime time to do it. So I'm gonna make the recommendation that we lock it in and just get it done, and then we get eight to ten years. It's all, whether we do it now, or we do it in June, it's all in the same budget cycle anyway, because our budget runs Ju- July first through June thirtieth. So it'll come off of our yearly maintenance budget. So it was, right now, spec to be done in June, we'll do it now, be done with it, and at least we'll, we know we can get it done, and comes out of the same pot of money. We did have another company reach out to us, came out and kinda walked through, it's the only other company I know in the area that does it. And their maintenance quote was somewhere in like the one eighteen's and one twenty, and so I said, and I asked him, I said, you know, I said, well, the other bid we got was like in the seventies, like, upper seventies, low eighties, and they're like, who's doing that? They can't do that. I said, well, I, we got another bid for that. So I mean, they didn't even turn in a bid to me then, because it was gonna be thirty thousand dollars more, so I do only have the one bid, but. Midwest is actually the one that installed the track, they've installed our football field, they've done all the work for us. I love working with them, because if we have any issue whatsoever, they come out and fix it, and they don't charge us anything, so. Versus getting these companies out of Kansas City or Oklahoma, come up and do it, and then you never see them again, so.
Any questions, comments?
Is there any way to make it last longer?
Uh, eight to ten years is kind of the deal. You go to like an old cinder track, we had that in Missouri Valley for a long time, that lasts forever.
The what?
The cinder track.
Oh, yeah.
What is that?
It's like a...
Gravel.
Gravel, hard dirt track.
Look red, little red cinders.
Yep.
Yeah, ours is white though. Missouri Valley is white.
I didn't know if there was like a covering or protective coating that...
And when you fall...
Oh, gosh.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I know, I know this is kind of that coating, but you can do it once, and then you're toast after that. I know that the track guys wanted me, wanted it to be blue.
How long, how old is this track?
Uh, twenty, twenty, actually, it might have been, no, it was twenty fourteen, it was installed.
So, yeah.
I was gonna say twenty twelve, but Missouri Valley was twenty twelve, this is twenty fourteen.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll move on to eight point oh six, Lewis Central Radon Mitigation Plan.
Um, so by state, by state law, we have to have a radar or radon mitigation plan that was put in place in twenty twenty-two. Now, we didn't, we had until twenty twenty-seven to actually do the, do the radon mitigation. So I wasn't concerned about it, but Jim just came to me and said, it's gotta be on our website, so. We've had a radon mitigation plan, it's just, it's super simple, uh, there we go.
We don't have a plan on ours.
Yeah, apparently, we don't have a plan. I swear I sent it to her, hold on a second here. Pause this. Thank you for your patience, go back to the... Yeah, I'll show that for now. You out there in the community can take a look at that page while I go over to my email and find... All right. Let's bring the audience back to the... All right, here is the radon mitigation plan, this is... He got this from another school, sort of complied with the law, Lewis Central School Board. Ooh, shoot, too far. Will adopt the current and our future director of building and grounds to be in charge of implementing all testing and mitigation necessary to comply with Iowa code. Will contract and schedule an outside firm who employs an Iowa certified radon measurement specialist to complete the required testing, its test has to be done for five years. Will perform testing in the following buildings, on the following dates. So he would like to do craft in Titan Hill this fall, and then the high school the next one, and the middle school the next one. And then he'll be put on a five-year testing schedule following the initial testing. And the Lewis Central Schools will post the plan and all test results to the school website. Will follow up on any testing indicates radon levels above a four PCIL by contacting radon mitigation specialist. Mitigation is required, it'll be completed within two years, the first test, and then we'll incorporate radon resistance construction techniques into, into future building projects. So that's it, that's all that needs to be approved. But one of the companies that does all of our, a lot of our, like, elevator testing right now, they do radon, radon mitigation. One of the things we don't wanna do is we don't wanna hire, because the first people that radon, that shout about radon mitigation testing are the radon mitigation companies who love to do the work. So we're gonna make sure that we get it done by an independent firm. And then if we need to employ the services of radon mitigation, radon mitigation company, then we will, so.
And, and what's the timeline? What was the, this fall?
Right here. So we would do craft in Titan Hill this fall. And really, what it does is you hire a company, they come in, they put a little box in every room, and I think it's there for twenty-four or forty-eight hours. And then they come collect the boxes, and then they do the testing, and then they send the results.
I was hoping the middle school was later.
Yeah, yeah, middle school would be last, because we wanna do it after, after construction, yep.
Should we do it prior to or during construction? That way, if we would have to put in the radon vents, we're not tearing stuff out again?
Yeah, potentially. Do you know, Andrea, do they, do they treat radon mitigation like they do asbestos mitigation? You can pay it out of management fund?
I have not seen it on there, but I have honestly not looked specifically for that, because I've never had it be...
So if you have to abate, if you have to abate asbestos, you can actually reimburse yourselves out of the management fund. So if that's the case, that would be preferable to having to spend, you know, bond money on radar, because radon mitigation gets so expensive. But to your point, if we're gonna have to do the mitigation anyway, why not do it at the same time as the construction? So, yeah, I mean, we could, we could just flip-flop these dates and do the middle school now, and move Titan Hill to later, if that's, that would make sense.
Well, I was just thinking, like, if you, if you do it on a new home, you can build it into the wall.
Right.
You do it on an existing home, then you have the PVC and the canister outside the house.
Touche.
So I was just thinking, if the wall's torn apart, we could kinda hide it, you know?
Yep, a hundred percent. Do you guys have any problem with doing that? Just flip-flopping?
No, but I'm just wondering if there's anything that would, if they're working on drainage, or if they're doing things, would that change it then? And then you would have the issue.
Have an issue after they disturb the ground and stuff?
Right, right.
Potentially, but then you'd be retesting in five years anyway. I guess, the question I have is, are, are the mitigation steps for a house the same as what you do in a school, or would they have to do something different?
Oh, I don't know, in a house, I mean...
A house, I have one in my house.
I'm gonna phone a friend quick.
Well, and then that can be discussed later too.
Yeah, if you guys are approving the plan though, I'm just gonna ask Jim, let's just call Jim, because he's been doing the research on this. I'll pull it up the microphone, can they hear it in the microphone?
Let them know he's on the microphone. He's on air.
Hey.
Hey, okay, we're in the board meeting, we're talking about radon mitigation. Can you talk real quick?
Yes.
Okay.
You wanna come back?
No, no, you're good. Hey, one question came up, should we move the middle school radon mitigation to like right away? So that way, if we have to do any mitigation, that we include it with the, with the, with the addition, with the renovation next summer?
Um, you have, you can't do it during the summer, you, the school has to be in session when you do the testing.
No, 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 we would do the testing this fall.
Oh.
But, but that way, but that way, when we do the, when we do the, the renovation next summer, if mitigation is needed, then we would, then we would do the mitigation the same time as the renovation, so we could hide the pipes and stuff.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Uh, yeah, that would make kinda sense.
Now, because if it's bad levels, do we have to test again in five years, or do we have to get the work done within two years?
There's a process that you have to go through, and there would be a retesting. And then, I mean, we could move straight to mitigation if we felt it was a problem.
It's within two years.
There's a process that you have to go through, that you have to retest. I don't have it in front of me, I am in my truck.
You're fine.
But there is a process that you have to go through. Um, and that would eventually lead to mitigation if, if it didn't remedy itself.
Or would it be better to do it after the soil and stuff is disturbed?
Or is it better, better to do it after the soil's disturbed, like, when they do the parking lot next summer?
Well, I, I was going to, um, I, I thought it would be, would be better to wait till after the project's done, but I hadn't really considered the, the fact that when we're renovating, we can hide pipes and stuff on part of the mitigation. So, I mean, that's a valid point.
I think that's probably any building that's gonna have, have it, it would probably be the middle school.
Lower levels of that, yeah. Yeah. And I do agree.
Okay, so why don't we move, since Titan Hill is elevated, why don't we move Titan Hill to, to twenty twenty-six, along with the high school? And we'll do craft in the middle school, and we'll just change it on here. We'll do craft in the middle school this fall.
Yeah, okay, that sounds great. I will, uh, I will get ahold of Atlas and make that change.
Okay, okay.
And I've got one more question.
Yep, yep, Tim's got a question.
So if, if we find out that mitigation is needed, is there a timeline as to when we have to have that completed?
Two years.
Two years?
I think it's three years, but I'm not a hundred percent certain, to be honest.
You, you have...
Jim, I have it pulled up, if testing indicates radon levels above four PCI for the inter-district shell.
Yep, he has it right here in the plan.
Pico curis?
Yes.
In the plan, if it's above four...
And then the mitigation plan must be completed within two years of the first test date.
You have it in your plan, Jim, how do you not have this memorized?
Thank you for not looking at it while you're driving.
Okay, so we'll do, we'll do Titan Hill and, in the high school in the fall of twenty-six, and we'll do craft in the middle school in the fall of twenty-five. Okay?
I can make that change, that's okay.
Okay, is that what I'm hearing from you guys? Is that good? That works? All right, sounds good, thanks, Jim. All right. All right, there we go.
Good idea, bringing that up.
Yes, very, yeah. Look at Director Sturm coming, coming through in the clutch, good job.
Any other questions, comments? All right, eight point oh seven, operational sharing agreements.
So we had two operational sharing agreements last year, just looking to continue them this year. One is transportation director, sharing with Missouri Valley. It's like on a consultative basis, they pay us ten thousand dollars, and then we each get four students at roughly eight thousand dollars apiece added to our account. And then HR director, we've been sharing Jenny Wright with Underwood again. Jenny does consulting with their HR department and makes sure that helps them with a lot of their rules and regulations, and making sure that they're up to date. Again, they reimburse us ten thousand dollars for her time, and then we both get, you know, four students at thirty-one thousand dollars total added to our state funding. Benefit for both these is, is like, according to say, you have to have an HR director, and you have to have a transportation director. Well, the smaller schools don't necessarily have the budgets for a full-time director, so they get, you know, incentivized through the state to then share services. So on paper, you know, Mr. Skokins, Missouri Valley's transportation director, and he'll consult with them on a weekly basis. And same thing with Jenny Wright with HR in Underwood, so.
Has there been any, any issues or anything with them?
No, they've both reached out and asked, asked to continue, and neither Chuck nor Jenny have any issues with it.
Okay.
They're not utilized that frequently, but, so, it's not a, it's not an additional burden at all, so.
Any other questions, comments? Moved to eight point oh eight, student personal electronic use policy, second reading.
This hasn't changed, I didn't really receive much feedback from last time, so if, if there's anything you guys wanna necessarily change on here, again, we, we're ready to communicate it out, we have... Again, we, we're ready to communicate it out. We have a, Emma has a, an easy to read. I can show you guys real quick here.
I think the latest one I sent you through chat.
Oh, did you send it in chat? Yep, so this is just mimics the policy and it's just a one, one page. So if you guys approve this tonight. She'll have it up on the website and send out to parents tomorrow.
Do we have any place where they have to acknowledge, parents have to acknowledge that they've read things or they've received the handbook or?
Yep, so as part of registration, they have to acknowledge that they've received the handbook and then that's in the, when we look at the handbook changes, this is primarily the handbook changes, so.
Any additional questions, comments?
And does this say by Iowa law?
Oh, right here, in accordance with Iowa House File seven eighty-two.
Okay, I see it.
We've adopted the following policy.
Okay.
And then again, here's a copy of the policy here. Just talks about what an electronic device is. Students may face disciplinary consequences up to an included suspension or expulsion. So, and then that's, that, then the disciplinary action changes in the handbook, so. It does, once this becomes a policy, it, the one thing that I just want to make clear is once it's a policy, all staff are required to enforce all policies. So if you don't, it's just like anything, if we have a policy on, you know, on a. I don't know, chewing on school grounds, can't chew on school grounds. If you chew on school grounds, you're probably gonna get written up, like. All, all staff members are required to ensure the students aren't utilizing technology in their classroom. So if they allow technology use to be happening in classroom, they're technically violating court policy, just like any policy, you know, so. We will reiterate that to staff and just say please, and honestly, like that usually becomes the biggest. Source of conflict among staff members themselves is when one group of staff members is allowing or individuals are allowing students to do things that the other ones say they're not supposed to. And so we're just gonna take it off their plate and say it's court policy, you're not allowed to do it, so, just that way.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, eight point oh nine, Titan Hill exterior envelope and door frame design agreement?
Yep, so this is BCDM, who's doing our high school addition and, and middle school renovation. They gave us a quote to go around and do all the Titan Hill exterior envelope and door frame design agreements. According to the city, we gotta have. Engineered drawings for all this because they're structural in nature, so. But, so this is the, this is the recommendation. Or this would be my recommendation is to have BCDM, they're getting pretty, they've done great work for us so far. I feel like they're very competitively priced, so.
Is there anything you're changing?
Just basically, structure for structure is kind of what we're looking at, so. Taking outdoors, putting indoors. Same thing with windows on the outside. There's a variety of masonry issues as well, like tuck pointing and that kind of stuff that. Needs to be addressed.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll move to eight point ten, twenty twenty-six, high school mechanical design agreement.
And again, here you go, you can just see, this is the time, sorry, I'll go back real quick. I forgot they had a timeline here. So they've already been on site to look through it. They've done a couple walkthroughs. They're, the construction documents. Truck created, so that way we can get early bidding on it, so we can try to get some preferential pricing. And then. Obviously, uh. Yeah, I mean, they'll kind of knock it all out. It'll be done by. Let's see, when are they bidding? They'd bid this November is what they would do. And then it would be done August twenty-six, so. All right, sorry about that. And then the next one, high school mechanical design agreement, this is the same thing, this, but this is for. Kind of the second part of the high school mechanical, so this includes. Uh, like the HVAC systems over like the locker rooms and the wrestling room and the band areas. Uh, we would like to get that whole wing off of the chiller, so then the chiller just focuses on the remainder of the building. And then also a lot of the little controls and that kind of stuff, so we kind of did the really big stuff this. This summer and then we'll do kind of the second half next summer for the high school mechanical. So Morrissey Engineering's who, we had designed our current. Chiller system, so we'll have them do the next section as well, fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to, to do twenty twenty-six stuff.
Do we know that the new chiller won't keep up?
Uh, I think it was kind of designed with, with the thought in mind that we're going to do. Like this kind of phasing was kind of in, kind of, kind of pre-designed when they, when they did it, so. The, like for instance, the wrestling room is one that they would love they have access to control their own, because they of course want it ninety-five degrees in there when they wrestle. You know, so. That's one of the areas that they wanted in. I think it's only two units still, if I remember right. I think it's one over the wrestling room and then it's one over. Like one that controls the, the whole wing of like the band choir and then locker room area, so.
But this is only for designing it.
This is just for designing it, yeah. And then there's a bunch of the controls, controls that are in there as well, so. This is where they get you, all the, all the design stuff. Welcome to government, government construction.
Doesn't mean I have to like it.
I don't like it either.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, then we'll move to eight eleven, student handbook updates.
All right, so here are the updates of this year. So elementary, remember Titan Hill and. Crafted the same handbook, so they updated staff names, updated the board policies. Updated lunch costs, changed the field trip policy to state that parents may sign their children out after a field trip. So originally it said that all parents must ride the, the, the bus back, where the kids must ride back after the field trip. We weren't really doing that anyway, so I said, well, if we're not doing it, don't leave it in there, change it, like, because we've allowed parents to sign out their kids. Really doesn't make any sense if you're leaving the zoo at two thirty to have to follow them back to school to get them, like, just take them with you, it's fine. Um, the cell phone policy update that you guys just, we'll vote on here in a bit. Updates start time, so this is the biggest change. We've rolled back the start time a little bit. We've added five minutes to the day at both Craft and Titan Hill. That actually allows us. To be more in line with the middle school and high school when it comes to instructional days, so there's times where, you know, with snow days and stuff. Just by adding five minutes to a school day, I, I add like two and a half school days onto the calendar, so. It's just important when it comes to snow days and those types of things that I don't have to run up against that, that ending. And then. Visitors will need to show ID along with getting, so that's part of that Raptor visitor management system, so they are updating that. The disciplinary matrix, this is their major minor system. Uh, they're, update one thing when it comes to student threats. Changed just from trimesters to semesters and then Manny Clayton, our head nurse. Changed a, a couple of policies here, so fever free without medication return to school. That replaces the twenty-four hour fever free. You know, so before it was like, you might be fever free, but then you have to wait another twenty-four hours. Well, now it's just, just fever free. I mean, that's so hard to track when it's like twenty-four hours. People lie anyway. They're like, oh yeah, they didn't have a fever since yesterday when they just broke, you know, so. Come to school, don't have a fever, we'll move on, so. Um, middle school, same thing here. A lot of the changes are due to semester. Trimester, semester, change in staff names. Uh, let's see, when the board policy was updated, they changed that. They updated the fees. They removed the Titan honor roll. It's now part of the wall of fame criteria, so it needed a section of its own. Disciplinary matrix, they make a small, a couple of small changes there. Cell phone policy be updated. Remember we combined the anti-bullying, anti-harassment, that was two policies. This ISB recommended changing it to one, so they put that in there. Wall of fame criteria was updated to include semesters and then. Really, that's about it. Nutrition services, we have a new payment program. We're going away from E-funds and we're going to what? Or not, yeah.
Uh, we're going from total K twelve to meal magic.
Total K twelve to meal magic. Is it magical?
Well, it's our, we didn't really have an option since total K twelve told us they were closing, so. And this one integrates with Power School and with E-funds, so.
Oh, good, so it's still E-funds, so I'll still put money in E-funds.
Or you can actually go through, straight through magic, meal magic if you'd like to as well. You have multiple options.
Can I, can I put money on certain students' accounts versus like, just as like family account?
Yep, meal magic will be separate, so each student will have their own account, but you can move it between if you want to.
So I can track.
One of your children, say you put a hundred dollars on each child at the beginning of the year and one of your children donate, you could move it to the other.
Cause here's the thing, as a kid going into middle school, I really want to track how many cookies and propel waters that she's buying at school.
Yeah, and you can also restrict those if you don't want her buying cookies or propels.
Very cool, yes, okay.
The good news is she can even buy it for her friends. That's great.
That is great.
We had that problem, yeah.
Yeah, that's how that works.
Okay, good to know. It'll be, uh, it's like a country club all over again where.
It's all free.
It's just a number, yeah, don't give them any money.
What was the name of that program again?
Meal magic.
Say it one more time.
Meal magic.
Meal magic, because I kept hearing twenty-four K magic and I was like Bruno Mars.
Total K twelve was our old.
Board policies that were changing, it's just the changes we've already approved.
Correct, yeah, the only one that's not yet approved is cell phone. You guys will make the decision in.
In its separate vote.
Correct.
One thing in the handbook that you were just reading off. The graduation credits, are those updated?
Yeah, so that's, that was just middle school so far, yep, we're just getting to high school right now.
Oh, sorry.
Nope, you're good. Luckily, there's no graduation credits in middle school yet, so. So high school, work trimester was updated, semesters and several location. Here are the updated fees, the price of the yearbook actually went up. The publisher sets the price there, so goes from sixty-five, seventy-five dollars a year. They eliminated all of these, this, these words here, let's see.
We all went to the same language across the nutrition accounts?
For this, so this is the language that was changed for everybody. So prepayment accounts can be made through meal, magic and E-funds. Then I can set, monitor, set spending limits, that'll be useful. Sorry, Ryland. I can be able to buy your popularity. A lot of language is still very consistent with what we had before, so. They have to have the bell schedules because they're going from a six-period to eight-period schedule. Digital ID, so all students will be assigned a digital ID, digital ID, which they can access on their cell phones or school issued Chromebooks. You can also get a printed, this is the, this is ID when kids come to school, they'll scan themselves in. If they're coming after arrival or leaving before dismissal, they'll scan in and they'll scan out, so that way we have an accurate. It'll be reflected in their Power School that, you know, they scanned in, they scanned out, so. That'll help too with a lot of times we'll get like a, like a kid will just leave and we'll count them absent. And then the parents like, well, my kid said they were there, you know, be like, well, they weren't, they weren't in class, like that didn't happen. Or even worse is they were there, but they were counted absent at the beginning because they weren't there and then when they showed up, the teacher didn't go back and fix the absences. Everything will be, every time you leave the building in the middle of the day or arrive, it'll be like the student's responsibility to scan it and out, so. As a parent, you'll know all the time where they're at. Cell phone policy that changed. Sorry, high school had the most changes. Students participating in school activities must be in five classes the day for the event to happen, so seniors must be in three classes, they participate. This used to be different because there was only six period days, so if you. Want to come, you have to be there for over half the day. They talked about, instead of doing excused and unexcused absences, we're using the words verified and unverified absences. Um, and then this reflects, you know, if you have more than nine absences in a class during a term, because our terms change. Trimesters were shorter, they were, you know, twelve weeks versus eighteen weeks. Um, college visits, we're encouraging, encouraging kids to visit college, say in the same language on weekends or school holidays, however, if they cannot be arranged. Please notify the office because we need to verify your absence now with the new truancy laws, so. Dances, so this is kind of new language. We've been doing this with the dances. We're not, these are not public events open to all. Because of the number of students that we have now, like at the high school. We actually allow juniors and seniors to bring guests to like the big dances, like the homecoming dance. And a prom, like as far as out of town guests, so freshmen and sophomores, they can attend the dance, they can attend with their friends. We do not allow you to bring out of town guests, freshmen, sophomores, it just becomes a, it becomes a nightmare, so. We become the place to be in council blocks at night, so. We had an issue with this last year, so we're putting in the policy, students prohibited from wearing costumes at school, including holidays. That promote costumes unless there's special permission provided by administration like homecoming dates, et cetera. We had an issue with students wearing full-on costumes to school and it kept being a distraction and there was nothing in, you know. So they're technically abiding by the, the dress codes, so now we're just kind of eliminating that, so. Now they will not be abiding by the trust code. Uh, this is just nuisance items. They took out all the cell phone stuff because that has its own policy now, so now it says its own cell phone policy. And then again, the anti-bullying, anti-arassment policy changed, you had already previously changed that. Restrooms, so they added a restroom policy in here. Students are expected to use the restroom facilities only for intended purpose. Loyering or hanging out in the restroom is prohibited to ensure a safe, respectful environment. Students must use stalls individually. No more than one student is allowed per stall anytime. If students are found sharing stalls, they'll be subject to searches and disciplinary action. Failure to follow these restroom, restroom rules and expectations may result in consequences ranging from detention to suspension. Additionally, students who violate this policy may lose, use the privilege to use multi-occupancy restrooms. Which means they'd have to go to the staff restrooms, you know, to be able to use those. Additionally, students who violate this policy may lose privilege. In such cases, supervised restroom plan will be implemented. That's our number one biggest issue at, in any, really in any building, is restrooms. Kids love hanging out in restrooms, they love.
Really?
Oh.
I never found anybody that wanted to hang out when I was in the restroom.
I, I never did either. I thought it was weird, but no, they.
It's a thing.
There, and, and you walk in, I'll walk in the bathroom when I'm there and there'll be three, four boys standing in a stall. And I'm, and you know, chances are they're not doing anything great, like you're four guys hanging out in a stall, like, so. That's, that's a, they love to do the vaping and the other things in there, so. So yeah, that's the biggest hangout place, so we have a policy in there now, so please don't hang out in the restrooms. Uh, and then they added weapon replicas and look-alikes. And then they, they just changed some of their, some of their rubric behavior here. And then they, they just changed some of their, some of their, uh, rubber behavior here, so. And added, you know, detention to suspension, one to three days based on cellphones. One of the things we did talk about, and just, this is actually in the policy that you guys looked at, is if a kid has their cellphone out, and you say, put it away, and they put it away, they could still get dismayed, be like, like, first, you know, maybe the first time is like a warning, like, hey, like, next time you have it out, like, you're gonna, I'm gonna have you taken to the office, okay? Next time you take it out, I'll be like, hey, I'll pick on Director Stern, you guys' cellphone out again, you gotta take it to the office. If you get up to take it to the office, no issue, you know, you're gonna lose it for the rest of the day, it's gonna be in the office, but it's a big deal. If you argue, or you say no, that instantly is no longer a cellphone electronic device issue, that's now an insubordination issue, which is an automatic suspension. So, so the biggest thing there is, if, is, we will not, because people will get that mixed up, to be like, my kid got suspended for having her cellphone out. No, your kid got suspended because they refused to follow a directive, that's called insubordination. That's the best thing we can do for our teachers and our staff, is to be really strict on that, because that's what's gonna get, that's what's gonna make this an easy thing to follow, you know, like, if you just comply and say, yep, you're right, I'll take my phone down there, shoot, I can't have it out anymore, like, no issue. But you argue, then it's gonna create a nightmare for our staff to try to enforce, so. Uh, concurrent enrollment, uh, that's just, they just kinda added the same language that the state has. Uh, learning lab, so this is a dedicated intervention extension period for, designed to support student learning essential standards. Provides students to focus time to receive additional help, they're struggling or to engage in extension activities deep in their understanding. Learning lab sessions are held every Tuesday and Thursday. So, learning lab, so we, we've had, we've always had Titan times. Learning lab is like alongside Titan times, like Monday, Wednesday, Friday, then is like more of your Titan time, Tuesday, Thursday is your learning lab. Um, and then study hall, we're gonna have a lot of study halls, and we've never really had time for study halls before, so they had to have a study hall, um, period in here. That's it, so, a lot of updates, but they're all based on policies that you guys changed either in May or June, or potentially tonight, so.
Any other questions, comments regarding the handbook updates? Okay, then we'll move into the second portion of our meeting, where we open the floor to comments and suggestions. Do we have anybody online?
No comments.
Alright, then we will move straight into action items. So, do I just combine ten, one, or just go with?
No, you have to approve one and two separately.
Okay, then we'll go into ten point oh one, high school safety vestibule addition and renovation hearing approval. Make a motion to approve?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the high school rough specs and R F P as presented.
Second.
Vote please.
The high school, uh, safety vestibule on renovation, sorry, I might have, I might have forgotten to change that, so.
Okay, I just read it as it stated.
Yep, that's my fault.
So, it would be high school safety vestibule addition and renovation?
Yes.
As presented? Is that what the motion needs to be?
Perfect, perfect, thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Then we'll vote please.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mrs. Shuffel?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Ten point oh two, high school safety vestibule addition and renovation bid approval.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to award the high school safety vestibule addition and renovation bid to elevate construction, um, for the amount of one million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Second.
Vote please.
Mrs. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mrs. Shuffel?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
I'd like to point out that that's another hundred and fifty thousand dollars under budget, so.
Good.
That's good.
Ten point oh three, Black Fox HVAC repair bid.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to approve repair bids with train for thirty-one thousand, seventy-seven dollars and sixty-one cents.
Vote please.
Mrs. Shuffel?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Ten point oh four, track maintenance bid.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the track maintenance bid from Midwest Tennis and Track Co. for eighty thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars.
Vote please.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mrs. Shuffel?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Ten point oh five, Lewis Central Radon mitigation plan.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Lewis Central Radon mitigation plan as presented.
Second.
Vote please.
Mrs. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mrs. Shuffel?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Ten point oh six, operational sharing agreements.
Mr. President, I'd like to make the recommendation to approve a transportation director operational sharing agreement with Missouri Valley and an H R director operational sharing agreement with Underwood as presented.
Second.
Vote please.
Mrs. Shuffel?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Ten point oh seven, student personal electronic use policy, second reading.
Mr. President, I'd like to make the recommendation to approve the second reading of the student personal electronic use policy, five zero three point one one, and regulation five zero, five zero three dot one one R one as presented.
Second.
Vote please.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mrs. Shuffel?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Ten point zero eight, Titan Hill exterior envelope and door frame design agreement.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the design contract for the twenty twenty-six Titan Hill exterior envelope and door frame renovation project with B C D M for forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Second.
Vote please.
Mrs. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mrs. Shuffel?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Ten point zero nine, twenty twenty-six, high school mechanical design agreement.
And actually, um, you can tell we've done a lot of projects when we've already approved this one. And Andrea reminded me, we did this during the special meeting in June.
Oh, that's right, okay.
I, now she said that, I'm like, of course we did, like, but I had it on my list. It's funny, is I have a list of, you know, what's gonna be in the next board meeting, I had this on my list, and then because we had the special meeting, I'm like, oh, we moved it. Totally forgot about that until right now, so.
Alright, then we'll move on to ten point ten, student handbook updates.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommended changes to all buildings' handbooks as presented.
Second.
Vote please.
Mrs. Shuffel?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Items of interest, future board meetings. Our next, uh, regularly scheduled board meeting will be August fourth, twenty twenty-five, at six thirty P M. And we also have a note here that our first day of school will be August twenty-fifth. Do you have any additional?
Uh, the only thing I was, I need to do is we need to find, I don't think it has to be a long meeting, maybe an hour and a half or so. Um, and we can do it for the special meeting, so we can kind of finalize our strategic planning stuff, now that we have all the, that information back, just kind of look through the comments and kind of just firm, basically, I just need you guys to firm up your final buckets, so. I don't know if we can do it on the fourth at five o'clock beforehand, or if we can do it, otherwise it'll be the eighteenth, um, August eighteenth. I was thinking August, the August eighteenth meeting would be a good one for us to do the walk, walk, walkthroughs. We could do, you know, start, you know, an hour and a half earlier, two hours early on that date, and do the walkthrough on that date, but if we did the week before, the meeting before, and did our, you know, hour and a half should be plenty of time, I need about an hour to kind of go through and, and ask you guys if you're firm on your buckets, and then, uh, kind of review some of the feedback data we got on that survey, and from S I A C, and then, um, that's really about it, so.
The fourth or the eighteenth? The fourth?
I was thinking the fourth, we could do the, the, we could start at like five o'clock on the fourth for the board work session, do a board work session, what, from five to six thirty? Then do our regular meeting, and then on the eighteenth, we would do, uh, walk, walkthrough starting at four thirty, and then whenever, we'll just start in one building, and whenever somebody shows up, like, if you can't show up till five or five thirty, then you just will text me and I'll tell you where we're at. But we'll start here, we'll kind of open the meeting, and then we'll go on our tour, so. The high school will be primarily where we'll be, because it'll be, that has the most change, so. But it, we'll probably take a drive down to Kraft, so you guys can see the finished vestibule in Kraft as well.
And what time would that start?
I think it'll start at four thirty.
On the eighteenth?
On the eighteenth, yeah. Especially if we're going down to Kraft, I think we can drive from here down to Kraft. You know, spend about half hour to forty minutes at Kraft, because they'll have the play, your playground will be pretty much done, so you'll be able to see the playground and the vestibule, and then I can try, kind of show you the, we'll have the visitor, um, the Raptor visitor management system up, so you guys can see how people will check into the building and that kind of thing. And then we'll go to, we probably won't do anything at the middle school, probably won't do a Titan Hill either, because just L E D lights and stuff at Titan Hill, so we'll just do Kraft and the high school. And, uh, you can park in the new parking lot, you know, that fun stuff, so.
Speaking of which, does P T A already know about the popsicles on the playground?
I, I reminded, uh, Mrs. Jensen, uh, like, two weeks ago when I saw it come out, to tell P T A, so then she reached out to P T A, and then P T A got back to her and said, well, we'll leave it like that, and then we'll come up with a Plan B, and I responded back with, there is no Plan, Plan B is Plan A. Like, Plan A will not happen, that will be a giant mud field, so.
Okay, do we need to do anything with this? Prove it, or not?
It was in the consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Yep.
It's basically, so you could read through it.
Alright, well, you can announce it.
Yeah.
And then it's a rummage sale and stuff, rummage sale, bake sale.
So, it looks like Dan's team is gonna do a, uh, raise money for uniforms and other costs, they're doing a, uh, garage and a bake sale. Looks like.
July twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth.
Twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, so. End of this, this weekend.
But it doesn't say where.
I actually, I just saw, I think they put something on Facebook on it, so, I think they were assuming you were gonna approve it, so. That's how, that's how these things usually happen, like, sometimes they even look at the date, and I'm like, that happened last week, okay.
They're better, they're, they're.
It's, it's, yeah, they are getting better.
But this isn't this next weekend, so.
Usually it's the new coaches that, that kind of forget about it.
Yeah.
Alright, seeing no other items on our agenda, can I get a motion to close our meeting tonight?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of us, pose.